Good evening. My name is Keith Romano. I like to call this meeting. This is the Inland Wetlands Commission meeting for Tom Monroe. It is October 14th, 2020, 7:12 PM. I will take a roll call of members of the commission. These answer here present, starting with myself, Keith Romano. Our Vice Chair and Secretary Louis Spence. Vice Chair, I'm sorry, David Stewart, who is a licensed surveyor and engineer of the state of Connecticut.
Here.
Carter Kingres. Here. Ross Masaraco.
Here.
BJ Hall.
Present.
Denise House.
Here.
Donna Szczesinski, our Office Manager.
Here.
And Sarah Stroud, our Recording Secretary. Excellent. Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. The objective and purpose of Inland Wetlands Commission is to provide for your protection of the inland wetlands and water courses within the town of Monroe. Meeting procedure. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which, after which, the commission will be asking the applicant questions. Due to remote meeting status, I like to ask that the applicant keep presentations as concise as possible. Commission will then review town staff and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. The last of all comments we made is that the chair or commission, after any and all comments pro or opposition of a general or of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Again, due to remote meeting status, please keep comments and questions. Frank, and a time of three minutes may be imposed. It's not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally their message is do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new material is entered in as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetlands related matters. Other applicants that do not involve a public hearing will follow a similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. Meeting followers are poached agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are. We received two new applications that are need determinations on what type of review is going to be done. The first one is IW7 2020-07. It's for Three Whitetail Drive. It's for a single family home and associated site work. The other application is IWC 2020-08. And that's for 169 Enterprise Drive. And it's a commercial stone processing with parking grading, proposed septic and building. You do not have these plans. I do have them electronically for you to view tonight. Hard copies will obviously come next week. Or you can, you also are able to just accept them tonight. Wait until you receive the hard copy. Review them and then make your determination at the next meeting. We have time for either one of those things.
We can, we can make a determination tonight without the plans, hard plans. Based on what you present to us.
Yes, you can. Yes.
Okay. All right. Great. Anything else, Donna?
Um, no, I believe that's it.
Okay. As previously, the format of the meeting based on the amount of time to 64 Cambridge for independence. Also, and push to the end of the meeting. So next is our general public participation. This is a period of time reserved. And public who has any comments to make of a general nature to the commission. Anything whatsoever. Do anybody in the public like to address the commission thing? I don't see anybody.
Nor do I.
Moving along. Regulated activities. Subject to reports, recommendations to PNC Commission, none. Regular meeting, no public input. None, public hearings. IWC 2020-03R. Meeting. IWC 2020-04 556 Pepper Street, proposed gravel parking area for commercial vehicles.
Okay, so Mr. Rios, I see that you are here. I do have your plans, which I can put up for you if you'd like. Were you able, was the commission able? Well, actually, I emailed you that because it came in. You did not get those in your package. Hold on one moment. Sorry, it takes a bit for my computer to open up the map. Okay, so this is the new map that Mr. Rios submitted.
Thank you, Donna. Good evening, committee. For the record, my name is Rios. Our property address is 556 Pepper Street, Monroe, Connecticut, zip code 06468. That's a new plan and drawing down my engineer design according to the suning commission. To build the parking space in the backyard. As you can see on the back of the, at the end of the driveway. He shows the concrete lab where the equipments will be parked. And right at the end, a rain garden replantation. Or the storm rain purpose and drainage. Also shows on a very teen line, that's the rotation of the truck. Where he's gonna be able, it shows how the truck is gonna be able to back it up and move forward to exceed the property.
I apologize, my computer's going wonky here. Without being able to see the whole plan, is there a planting plan and for the rain garden on the sheet?
Yeah, that's correct. All of the back where the oval. He said rain garden, 10 feet. Is where, oh, basically will be all plantation, all type of rain garden plantation. There is also on the the engineer specified the deep and the way to build a rain garden. The installation of the processing. Type of soil to be used. And the maintenance.
Is there a listing of what plants there are and how many there should be, with size?
It chose, has the rain garden. He only stayed thus on trees. Yeah, a few type of vegetation to plant. He hasn't specified by the name of the type of the plant, if it's that, that specification that you need.
So you're saying there is not a listing of which kind of plants and how big they are? Is that what I'm hearing? I believe that is correct. Okay. This is very difficult without having the whole thing in front of us.
Is it specify the the trench? The big of the rain garden will be how deep it should go, it should be in order to be sufficient for the to drain that amount of pavement driveway.
Well, I don't know if this was explained to you or not, but usually a rain garden indicates a garden with plantings that are specifically designed for removing pollutants and that kind of thing from the water before it gets percolated into the soil. And a certain amount of fabric, there's a certain way that a rain garden is constructed. You know, it's not just dirt, it's not just rock, it's, it's constructed in a certain way. And we usually require details on how that's to be done. I'm surprised your engineer didn't mention that to you.
No, no, no. He mentioned me that. That's what I think on that specification and some measurement on the installation. He specified some of those information.
Where is that information?
And on installations?
I don't have that.
Installation notes.
No, that doesn't have anything to do with the rain garden. At least not the one I'm looking at. Let me see what else they gave here. There was a list.
If I could, Lois, I didn't see any quantities or table at all. It just has the detail saying that the basin is two feet wide at the top, two to one slopes. Has a little crushed stone on the outside and that's all it says. That was all I found on the, on the drawing.
Okay, so that, that's basically what I was asking. So we really don't have enough, quite, quite enough information on that.
The walls on it seem pretty steep also.
So we see from your documents there that you've agreed to the paving of your surface. There, I think that's the document right there.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Maybe if we start there and work back. So our previous discussion had been to make sure that inland wetlands would be aligned with planning and zoning, or, or your application would be aligned between the two. And you have accepted the requirements from planning and zoning to pave and address their comments to your paving plan. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so what we're looking at then is the sort of the new view for us that is addressing how the runoff would occur from the pavement and where the, the drainage and this rain garden would happen. So I think if we, if we maybe go through this and I think Lois, you flagged the detail on what will be planted there. I think we should you know, put, put that on the checklist and maybe look at the other items that we need to address in this. And I'm, I'm referencing those, all those documents that Donna, you sent out on the email yesterday. I think the one same ones you've got listed here.
Did they get my comments?
Sorry?
Did they get the comments that I did today or no? They went out too late?
I don't.
Well, Mrs. Holstein with the comments.
Well, I know you got it and none of the commission got it. That's
Yes, we did receive those.
Okay, just making sure as you're talking, BJ, that you have everything.
Yes.
Okay.
So we have your comments also. So I think, I think finally we've got all the information we need to walk through this, right?
I must not have downloaded that. I'm sorry, Lois, were you talking? Yeah, I'm sorry if I cut you off. I, I must have missed that. I thought I downloaded everything you sent and printed it out, but I don't have any more information on 556. So I'm running blind. So if you guys can walk me through it or give me five minutes to go back to the other computer and download it and print it out, then I'll have my information.
Are, Donna, are you able to show the comments from Denise?
Yes, absolutely.
That might save Lois the need to go print that out, but I think that addresses a lot of the questions that we've got.
Yeah, Lois, it's, it's basically everything you were asking for, a planting list. Pad, the pad for the dumpsters, it has to be enclosed. That's part of the planning and zoning regs. And also, you know, the planting list, you have to also put in the markers for the wetlands, you know, around the property. From where the driveway goes in and where the pavement ends and that pad is put in. So it's just, it's the basics that he has, still has to follow up and finish. Because we don't have that in front of us on that final transcript that he sent.
I apologize. My computer does not want to open it. I don't know why. The joy of remote.
There we are.
Okay. Do you all have controls to scroll? No?
No. No.
Darn it. It wins for losing today. It's the way of the world.
There we are.
There you go.
Denise, do you want to walk us through that?
Sure. Um, Mr. Rios came and met with Planning and Zone, Will Agosta and myself. So we tried to get both commissions' comments, try, you know, tie it up as one, you know, one submission. Um, so the red, the redder, there are questions or things that we need to talk about a little bit more, but during the first review, we talked about a gate and a fence and that was the existing gate and fence. It was just how it was shown on the map and that's, that's been addressed. Um, we talked about the area to be paved and it is paved now and it does, the map does show that there's a grass strip between the edge of the pavement and where the stream is on the adjacent property. Um, it doesn't show any plantings and whether the wetlands is gonna want a little bit of a buffer besides just grass that's, that's between the edge of his driveway parking area and that piece of property, which is the town of Monroe's property, I believe, is open space. Um, we had talked about a physical barrier of like maybe a split rail fence or a boulder. Now there's the rain garden behind the dumpsters. So I'm not sure if we're, you know, the, the rain garden is in lieu of the physical barrier. Um, yeah, we just, that, that is a buffer before we hit the wetlands, but I, you know, whether the commission feels that's enough of a buffer. Um, and Lois picked up, there's, you know, I didn't find any details on planting, any schedule of what plants, quantity, that sort of thing. Uh, the inland wetlands markers. I anticipate maybe three markers along the edge between his property and the one adjacent um, the town, the town of Monroe's open space. Once again, three or four, that's something that we, it may not be shown on the map now, but it's something that could be done as a condition of approval. Um, he does show the dumpster pad, but there is no detail for it, which would be something for construction purposes. Um, we talked about there not being any planting chart for the rain garden either. Um, there's a couple of things that are on the map, like the anti-tracking pad, which really doesn't need to be shown on the plan because there is no anti-tracking pad. Um, the notes for construction schedule. It states that they are gonna begin fall of 2020 with completion of winter 2020. Uh, plants, asphalt plants typically close around mid-November and with the timeline we have now, I'm just pointing it out that I'm sure that schedule has shifted, so that might be something that would want to be updated. Um, the silt fence that they have, they have it located all the way along the wetland edge. I'm don't feel, first of all, you don't want it right at the edge of the wetland. I like it upwind a little bit and it doesn't have to be quite as extensive across the whole backyard as it's shown. And then this will probably be a comment from the engineering department is the test pit and the perk tests were done in a different area than where the rain garden is. And that, that's something that the engineer, engineering department's gonna be looking at, but I just made a comment about it that that might be something that's brought up. That kind of addressed my comments. So nothing major. It's just little, little things. And if I walk too quickly through it, I'm sorry.
Okay, do you have any questions or comments from the commissioners on this application?
Well, we're missing too much information though to close this hearing, are we not?
As presented so far.
Because of the extensive punch, punch list that Denise just presented, we still have more work to do and more to look at to approve. Um, and needs to show up on the, the plan.
I, I think that the, the comments on Denise's report here give us the items probably for Mr. Rios for his checklist and once those could be agreed to, we might by the next meeting maybe be able to close this out.
Agreed.
This, this will require one more update to the map and to the plan, hopefully.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Great.
Right, so we'll table this application to the next meeting. Hopefully we have all our information at the time.
Do we want to allow Mr. Rios to comment before we move on?
Uh, sure.
Make sure you understand, sir, what, what we're asking.
Yes, um, the update of the plan um, with the delineation of the driveway. And then a more described list of plan that is for the construction of the rain garden. Um, some question that I have is, um, someone mentioned a enclosure for the for the equipment or dumpsters place. Is that means that something that it need to be like with that roof? Enclosure or choose this surrounding?
Um, I believe the town may, and I could be wrong. I, there, we may have a standard detail. It's typically, it's a concrete pad with a fence around it. That's something I would talk to Will about because that's more planning and zoning, but since I'm trying to help you. That's something I would talk to Will about because that's more planning and zoning, but since I'm trying to help you get everything done. So when we say yes, you go to zoning, you know, it's 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 done at that point.
All right, so fence around the on Chris now.
In your comments, Denise, you mentioned that the test pit and the perk test are not at the same site as the rain garden.
Correct. And I'm assuming that when the town engineer does his review, he will probably comment on that more because he does the storm drainage. Um, I believe that was because the prior location was for some galleys that were in that area. So I'm, you know, I'm kind of relying on the town engineer to do that aspect of his review, which had not been able to be completed yet.
So no action from us?
No.
Okay.
Did I, do I remember hearing that that the lawn area in the back was, um, lawn over wetland soil?
Yeah, it's been like that for many, many years. Correct.
I mean, if that's the truth, then we're digging a test pit in wetland soils and.
Well, there, there is test pit data that's on the map now, um, from what they did before, and I I don't have the map in front of me, but I believe the perk was like one in 10. So it was, you know, upland enough that apparently it, you know, I can only go by what the results are on the map, but I thought it was like one on 10.
Right. Okay. Well, we would need to have it in the rain garden there anyway, and that would give us the information we need. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, ready to move along? I'd say so. Okay. For this man, it'll be discussion.
What? Public comment?
Yep. Can I say something? Um, Mr. Rios, I will need a, a letter or email from you granting the commission an extension so that they can continue the hearing till the next meeting.
Sure. You have a date for the next meeting?
You can just email it to me tomorrow. That would be sufficient. Just an email saying I grant the commission uh, an extension of time to continue the hearing.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Stewart, you saying public comment, you think? No?
Yeah, we need, obviously, before we close this, you need to pass a public comment, I believe.
But we're not closing it. We're just table. Yeah, but I could do it now. That's fine. Anybody? Uh, public have any comments to make on this application? In favor of this application? Anybody in the public have any comments? This application? Does anybody in the public? Anything to say about this application? Okay, it looks like we're free to move along.
Um, well, actually, I just. Yep.
Exhibits.
Exhibit seven was the revised map titled Proposed Drainage Plan by HK Associates. Um, there was a map, map depicting the split rail or boulder fence. Uh, exhibit nine was Drainage Computation by HK Associates. Uh, exhibit 10 was the bond estimate form. Exhibit 11 was the response to town engineer comment. And exhibit 12 was the updated inland wetland agent comment. And that's it.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, off to enforcement, NOV discussion. IWV dash 2020 dash 10, 172 Enterprise.
All right, my mic was off. Um, I believe that the owner of the property might be online, but I'm not sure. I'm not sure, um, Gaetano Marina, if he's related to once, if he's with 172 Enterprise.
Move yourself, Mr. Marine.
There we go.
Thank you.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I think I think you guys were muted when you said 172 Enterprise Drive.
Um, go ahead. So, um, this is, as we've been starting, is we've been trying to do all the properties in the industrial park. And this was the next one in line and there's been, it's, there wasn't approval years ago and it's kind of being utilized as a construction yard. Perhaps there's activity going on, but we do have some activity that's in the upland review area, which includes clearing, storage of material, unapproved equipment and unapproved structures. And just so you know, Ms. Marie, we're not, we're, everybody in that park is being looked at right now. So it, we're systematically going around the park, trying to, trying to get everybody to, um, I don't know, clean up things, being compliant.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't mind that. I mean, you guys, you guys do your thing. Yeah, I'm, we received a letter. Now, just so everybody understands, uh, we purchased this property, I think it was like 15 years ago. So we haven't, when you guys say here that we have unapproved clearing, unapproved storage, unapproved equipment, unapproved structures, that's been like that for 15 years. It's not like we just did that this year, two years ago.
We, we realize.
15 years.
We realize the industrial park has a lot of stuff that's been going on, 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 I don't want to say unnoticed, but.
No, 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 we have the permit to do this. I just didn't realize that we had to reapply for the permit every five years.
Well, you had a permit for certain activities and I believe it was for a construction of a building. The building's not up. So once that expired, since the building's not up, there's activities that are in the upland review area, hence.
Well, yeah, I think we have a permit for a construction yard.
Um.
Construction yard.
Not from what I found from wetlands. We had something in a permit that expired in 2012. Um, I don't have the permit in front of me, but, um.
Well, I have, this is what I have right here.
Do you want the report up, Denise?
So.
He would have the report. We're talking about the original, um, application that.
Okay.
I don't know if I have that on the jump drive, Donna, to be honest. Um, but that's what, so this is what we're discussing. So you're saying that you have an approval from wetlands to have a construction yard.
That's correct, yes. It's always, it's always been like that from when we bought the property from John Kimball. We bought the property with the contingency that we would have approvals for a construction yard. That's actually in our deed for the property.
It's in the deed.
So we have, I'll read it off to you right here. We have uh, section 117, 2115B of the excavation section of the Monroe zoning regulations with states creating stockpile material removal of the same shall not be considered as a landfill or excavation operation requiring a permit. Um, I mean, we have all of this verbiage in our actual, um, you know, in our, in our purchase of the property that, you know, John Kimball, I'm sure you guys are familiar with him. When he sold us the property, we had that. So um, again, I mean, we, we will, you know, we will reapply for this and, you know, we'll get our lawyer involved and do everything we have to do. But, you know, this is for us, we do plan on putting a building there, but it is a construction yard. It's for construction purposes.
So I guess I'm going to have to do, you know, I'm going to have to look at the deed. I wouldn't be looking at a deed to see that it says construction yard, but it sounds like I have to do a little bit more digging to.
Yeah, or if you want, during business hours, I could, I could come by Town Hall tomorrow and we could, we could go over it. If you'd like.
That, that's fine. Um, like I said, I, I, all the records that I found had to do with the building that the permit was for a building, which hasn't been done and has since expired. So that's why we, you know, it came across as being in a wetlands, so violation.
Yeah, I think what we're going to do is we're going to, because if I'm going to have to reapply for a permit, I think we're going to come up with a new set of drawings and try to get a permit for a building. I think we will probably just end up building a building there. Um, the reason we've put that on hold is we've done a few other things. Um, and really, the reason, I don't know how much in the weeds you guys want to get to here, but we, as a construction company, we need storage. Now, I know Vedera's down the road. They got a permit for some outside storage. Grasso Construction has permits for outside storage. Um, as a construction company, we, we need outside storage. So, you know, by building a 20,000 square foot and only having a 20,000 square foot building, that's, that's fine. But we need three acres of outside storage to go with that.
Understood.
So, you know, that, that's part of what we kind of have to talk about and we'll have our engineer and everybody kind of work that out. But I can come down to Town Hall tomorrow and we could, we could go over all this stuff before I actually apply for a permit. If that's okay with you.
Oh, that's fine with me. I, I'm wondering if the commission's going to weigh in on this. Like I said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull out the old one because based on what we had in our records, it was the only wetlands permit I had was for a building, which has since expired, but I need to now go into your deed and see what your deed says. Because there may be something in the deed that, you know, was written the deed that we don't know about.
Yeah, and when I come see you, I'll bring what I have and we'll go from there.
Yeah, that sounds fine with me. Perfect.
Okay. Sounds good. Nice to meet you guys.
Um, so do you want, do the commissioners have any questions or comments about five, um, this NOV discussion?
Without more paperwork, it doesn't seem to make more, it doesn't mean this, doesn't seem to make sense without having more information to work from. So I, I would like to see what the original IWC permit was. And, you know, the dating on that and that kind of thing. Uh, I've never heard of anything being permitted on a deed that, that, um, that we didn't know about. So I'm, I'm curious to know what's going on. So before that.
Do research too.
Denise, is there any, is there any action on this property with planning and zoning?
No, not at this time. I mean, they, they, you know, I think, and I could be wrong. I know that in the past, um, land use years ago had gone through all these properties and had talked to them, you know, in regards to zoning and wetlands. Right now, with everything going on, I'm just going through with anything with wetlands on, on all the different lots.
So we'll, we'll table this, um, this NOV until next meeting?
Yeah, and whether, you know, once I know what's going on, whether Mr. Mariney has to come or, you know, he could definitely call in and join us, or I'll have more information.
Good. Moving along to.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. ICP 2020 outstanding violation for clearing and filling of wetlands in upland review area, obstruction of shed and regulated area.
Okay, this was an original violation back in 2014 and this is, should be in your packet. Um, I have reached out to this property owner numerous times. When he had his original, or when they had their original violation, um, they were told to apply for an IAA to move the shed. There was other violations, but it seemed that what the commission at that time decided is that they needed to get an IAA and move the shed. And when I came on board a couple, couple of years ago, going through the old violations, I tried to resolve this. And I have reached out to the property owner several times, trying to get this resolved. And my letters have basically been unanswered. Um, there was one point in time where I think he called and talked to Scott and said he was going to find out where septic system was and then he was going to um, come in to apply for it. And that was probably two years ago. So at this point, this violation's been around for six years. So the fact that it was an original NOV, I wanted to ask the commission whether we should make it a citation to try to get this done and closed once and for all.
Would like to make a motion to, for citation?
I would like to ask Denise with quick question first. So is this good on their property?
Um, um, it almost seems like it's not on the property. We're not fully sure if it's on their property or not. I mean, the, the, the map that you're looking at was what was created before I came. That's based on the GIS information, which is not always accurate with property lines.
Okay.
Because yes, more so on this one, but if you look at the GIS aerial, Lois, you would see it's really more on the property now.
Okay. All righty, um. I move that we bring this to citation then, maybe get their attention.
The motion for Commissioner Spence for citation, or second?
Second.
Second, Mike, Commissioner Gingrich, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion to pass unanimously. On to the application area determination. IWC 2020 dash 06, 224 Guinea Road, movement landfill and reestablish. Yeah, is the property owner applicant here?
I believe he was here. I saw him. Well, I saw the engineer for him online.
He's here. He's right, he's here, but he's muted.
He's not, he's muted.
Oh, yeah, but I'm sorry, which one are you addressing right now?
So we're, we're trying to, yeah, we're not looking for the applicant because we're trying to determine.
Oh, it's a determination. Right, I'm sorry. All right, so that's, uh, that was my fault. Okay, so.
I have a question. Um, I'm familiar with this property and I'm familiar with this violation. Uh, this is supposed to be a response to a violation, not an application for development. Um, it would, it happened a long time ago and, um, we were basically ignored all that time. So I don't think this is the right kind of application because a remediation or an answer to a violation goes on a completely different timeline than an application for development does. There is no development that's being proposed with this application. So I'm not sure where to progress from here, but I know that this is the wrong kind of application to be being presented.
Okay. So this is a, so this is a remediation submission, correct? Is that what you're calling it?
Should be.
Then.
So they should resubmit with the proper form? And because it does have a different requirement.
Got a completely different timeline. And, um, statutorily, it should be done the right way.
We still do a hearing?
Um, well, you know, if it's a, if it's a remediation, but, you know, or a submission for a violation, it doesn't get a hearing determination, I don't believe.
Sounds right.
Right, it's just. Right, because you're, it's coming in in response to a violation. There are larger projects such as the 64 Cambridge that is quote, site development and remediation. But this is not that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, which property is this pertaining to?
It's a private property, 220, 224 Guinea Road.
Thank you.
Um, so what do we do here?
I'm not sure. I, Barbara, is there? I, Barbara, is there any kind of precedent we do here? Do we, i- it's gotta be accepted, I guess, but does it? Because it's not right.
I haven't seen this application, so I would need to take a look at it.
Okay, because it's not really an application.
If you want it, if you want to continue the matter, I can take a look at it and advise the commission, but I just, I don't know the specifics of this whole matter.
Um, yeah. Could we let the, uh,
Mr. Chairman, it's Dave Bjorklund, could I speak?
I'm asking that out, I'm asking for that, Dave, right now. Is this, uh, is it appropriate to let the design engineer speak on behalf of this, at this moment? Barbara?
Yeah, sure, you can, you can have him. Hear what he has to say.
Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Dave Bjorklund, I'm, uh, the president of SPAP Bjorklund Associates. Uh, we have offices in Monroe. Uh, what we did here was we had filed an application, I believe about five years ago, on behalf of the Ferrara family. Uh, and that petition was dropped for reasons of health and finances. Uh, it never went forward. And at that point in time, we filed the same application as what is before you this evening. Uh, and that, that's why we, and tha- and that application was accepted and did proceed, I believe, to a public, public hearing. Uh, the commission would like to have us file another application, you know, alongside this or file another one and, uh, and, but we'd like to have this go forward. Uh, the house, the property has been sold. This has been hanging around for more than five years. Uh, that's how long I've been involved in it. And, uh, the, the family is, would like to see this proceed, get the work done so that they can sell the property. They do have a buyer. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave, um, well, this is good news. It's good when someone wants to get something done. What do we do? Can we discuss, can we discuss it?
My recommendation would be to, um, to withdraw the application and resubmit a violation remediation. Because it is an answer to a violation. And that is, I think, the utmost um, importance at this point.
Okay. Um, so that's just.
Excuse me, there's no site development whatsoever being proposed? This is just for remediation?
This is Dave Bjorklund, that's correct.
Um, what do we think?
Don't do what I think.
It did a matter of, some wording in the, on the, on the upper letter of this, uh, of this, uh, packet we had here? I mean, is that the difference?
Say that again?
Is it a ma- is it a matter of, you know, some wording on, on, on the front page of this, of the packet? I mean, is that what we're talking about?
It's a matter of, um, statutory timing. Um, applications for development go through a certain um, procedure. Their timelines are very specific. Their extensions are very specific. You don't have that with remediation. It's completely up to the commission and the violator, I'll call him, not the applicant, uh, to work out the details. So you're beyond the statutory requirement. And, um, it gives both parties, I think, more leeway.
Yeah, but it sounds to me like these people are ready to, to do this work and, and close this violation out. So I, I, I feel bad to delay them if there's any way we can, you know, circum.
This, I, I'm very familiar with this, very familiar with this, um, this whole property. It's not gonna go away that fast. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. There's a lot that wasn't addressed in the paperwork that we, we did receive. Um, and, uh, it, it's not gonna be cut and dry done. It, it's, uh, there's too much there.
I think, I think the applicant would be well-suited by withdrawing this and moving on to a remediation submission, as Lois said, because the way it's drawn, it, it would be a significant activity we'd go to, at least I would recommend we go to public hearing, which is gonna take a lot longer than, um, a remediation submission. He is not proposing any, any building development, as far as I can see, so.
No, this is Dave Bjorklund for the applicant. We're proposing regrading the area of the violation. Uh, and then there is a planting plan, uh, that will, the wetlands in the area have been destroyed. We decided to reestablish that wetland corridor the, uh, as a result of excavation, reestablishment of topsoil, and a planting plan that's been prepared by, uh, Davison Associates.
So are you, are you ready to withdraw your application, come back next meeting with a, with a remediation submission? Or do you want us to, 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 uh, act on this? Because I think we, if he doesn't want to withdraw his application, we have to, we have to act on it. He's got the right to request it.
Yeah, no, I, I think the, based upon the commission's position, the, uh, I'm not even, the, uh, I, I think we'll, we'll withdraw the application and resubmit it at the next meeting.
Okay. Okay, applicant withdrawals, and I guess we, next one?
Okay, so the next one is the Three Whitetail Drive. It's IWC 2020 oh seven. It was, um, submitted for, um, a single-family home. If these things would ever open up on my computer, it would be easier. I don't know if you're gonna be able to see this. This is for, um, a home. I don't know whether Denise has had a chance to review it yet. I mean, if you guys want to wait until you get the plans right in front of you, that's completely up to you.
I haven't reviewed it yet, um, only looked at it in terms of the, the conservation easement for him to get his letter from the town.
I think we should postpone this to the next meeting.
I second it.
We'll move to the minute.
That was Jim and Lois.
Clark.
Oh, Clark, okay. Sorry, Clark.
All right, so that was a motion to both in the next meeting?
Yeah, it was a badly stated motion.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Extentions, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and.
Now, onto IWC 2020, that's zero eight.
Right, and so that's gonna be sort of the same thing. I don't know.
Am I making sort of the same motion?
I have a motion for Commissioner Stewart. Seconded by Commissioner Hall. All in favor? Aye. Any, uh, opposed, any extensions? Motion passing unanimously.
Okay.
Okay, on to other.
Okay. I said, okay.
Uh, eighty-three Ryngridge Road, installation of pool, IAA or IWC application.
Okay, everybody should have it in their packet, um, whether we put it up on the screen or not. The, um, the property owner wants to put in a pool. Back in, I don't remember when it was, several years ago, he had an IAA, which allowed him to, um, do some test pits in an undisturbed area to find out whether a pool would be feasible. Now he's coming forth to us and is looking to, it was 2008. He is looking to put the pool in the location where he did the test pits. The question I have is, if we allow test pits to be done as an IAA, are we gonna allow the pool to be as an IAA? Or does he have to submit an application to the IWC because it is wooded area?
Is that a good question? What, uh, I don't know, how do we, how do we proceed with this one?
Because, I mean, typically, if it's undisturbed area, it would be a commissional approval. The fact that there was an IAA for activity in this area, I wasn't fully sure.
How much of the area is undisturbed?
Um, I mean, it's, it's lightly wooded. He's gonna, he would have to take down some trees and then, uh, do a little bit of grading after the pool is installed. I mean, I, I wouldn't say it's like a forest. It's not heavily wooded in that respect, but there, you know, it is, there are trees there. His lot is predominantly tree.
The red line is the elevation of pool apron. I don't quite get it. Oh, did you explain that?
Okay, the, see, it's hard to tell. One is kind of, this, this was submitted to me. One of them is kind of a magenta, the other is red, which is, it looked very similar. Um, pardon?
Lovely.
Yeah, I mean, you can see where the grading is, and he has a pool basically in blue. And there's a square up towards the top. That, that's really the apron. This other red, I'm not. The fence goes around, that other red does not make sense for the, the pool elevation. There's a perfect square that's in red. I mean, I basically was paying more attention to the pool itself, the, the L shape.
That looks like quite a bit of disturbance, judging by the grade, the yellow grading line. And he's, he's like, out of the hundred-foot setback, he's taking like seventy-five feet of it to grade. So that sounds like it's a little bit more extensive than just an IAA.
That's why, that's why I wanted to.
That's my personal opinion.
This is why I brought it to everybody.
Denise, what's this square wetland?
What's square wetland?
Isn't the wetland square?
Oh, that's only a little piece of it. It, it's not square, that, it, it, it's in a regular shape. It just kind of goes into his property at a funky angle, and someone made a square around it and shaded it.
Okay, so it's not really square.
No, because if you really look at it, Jim, there, there's a dotted, a dotted and dashed line that kind of comes through. That's weird and out and around.
This looks kind of square. There's nothing strange about it.
No, no. No, I verified the wetlands location on several maps, so I, I was in agreement with that.
I guess, being the way things are, I would, uh, make a motion that we allow for an administrative approval.
Okay, we have a motion for administrative approval. Is that a second? Oh, second. All right. Motion, I guess.
I did my best, I withdraw my motion. I'm making a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we bring it to, um, some kind of a here, that they, that a regular application for development is submitted in, because of the fact that there is so much, uh, disturbance within the upland review area.
I'll second that. I got a motion from, uh, Commissioner Spence and seconded by DJ Hall. Um, I think, uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. I'm ready to do the agenda.
Okay, I have one more. Fifteen Owl Hill Road. It's a past project that, um, it was a past violation citation. Um, they did the work, they want to come in and, and you can have kind of a colored map. It might be a small map in your packet. Um, they would like to take some lawn and put some more plantings in. And they, uh, they gave us a proposed planting list um, to do it. I was not involved when this violation was around and everything, so I didn't want to just say yes. I mean, I think it's great that they want to put more plants in, but I didn't want to make the decision myself, um, whether we could just allow this as an IAA, or do they need to put an application in?
What's the, what was the address again? I missed that.
Fifteen Owl Hill Road.
Oh, Owl Hill, yeah.
I believe some of the activity may be in the conservation easement. They'll just have to get a, um, approval if that's the case.
On this, on, on the, um, paperwork that we got, I didn't see anything about quantity, sizes, or placement.
It's up at the top, they, they put it up at the top right corner. It says proposed plant list.
That's just a list, though. That doesn't tell you where they're going or how big they're supposed to be. It's just a list of plants.
So, but, um, but do we want, is, is this something they have to do? Is this submitted to the commission, or um, would this be an IAA?
This was not required by a previous?
No, no, the previous violation, everything had been done. It was signed off, I think, two years ago. I believe it was two years ago it was signed off on.
That's a conservation easement, isn't it? That was encroached on, was that, am I getting the right one?
Yeah, you're right. Some of it was in a, uh, they were in a, um, encroached in a conservation easement and actually went on someone's property as well. Yeah, you're right, some of it was in a, uh, they were in a, um, encroached in a conservation easement and actually went on someone's property as well.
I do remember this one, then. Um.
I mean, I think it's great that they wanna put more plantings in. You know, get rid of some of the lawn and put more plantings in, I think that's great, but I just.
Well, do you feel comfortable dealing with that on your own?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, with me, I move.
Make a motions.
I move, I grant, I move that we bring it to approval.
Motion for Asian approval from Commissioner Spence, you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Kingris, all favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now we're on deliberations on completed hearings, nothing yet. Bond release rector reports, do we have one of those?
Yes, we do, fifty-five Karen Drive. Um, they requested a five thousand dollar bond release request, and, um, I recommend get released. Should be a letter in your packet.
Motion to release.
I second that motion. Release by Commissioner Stewart and seconded by Lisa Clark?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Kingris, all favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. I think there's one more, right?
Um, time extension is the next one.
I saw another bond release. No, am I seeing things?
Unless you have something different than I do.
No, I guess not, was that originally a forty thousand dollar bond? Oh, maybe, maybe my eyes just crossed something else. I saw something about forty. Alright, so on next is, uh, time extensions, which I'll let, uh, Lois over for that.
Okay, time extension, we got some paperwork in packet, I believe, did everybody get that in their packet?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Clark. Um, they're asking for another ninety day, um, extension, this is the third one. Uh, due to delays and shutdowns caused by COVID nineteen. Uh, their issues are, um, the combining of all parcels, including five Victoria Drive on the Monroe Land Records, and the commencement of remediation work, and.
I did look that up, Ms. Lois, October fifteenth was the deadline.
They have two more days. Um. This is third extension, is it not?
Yes.
Okay, now, in our approval, what did we say was the, 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 uh, deadline for the remediation work?
October fifteenth.
That was the remed, okay.
Yep, I looked that up.
Wait a minute, that was in, that, if that was an extension, that wouldn't have been in the original approval, would it have?
Original approval said October fifteenth. I, it's, it's on a jump, if need be.
Yeah, I can put it up on the screen. I, I'm, I'm having a little bit of a, we discussed this last time, it seems to me, um, no, we didn't. They're supposed to combine all the parcels, and I guess there's an issue with combining all the parcels, cause one's in Trumbull. And.
Part of it's in Trumbull, yes.
Part of it, that's right. And, um, we had said, we, we did discuss this at some point, we had said that part of our approval was that all of the properties were to be combined. And that was enlisted on the land records. Um, and they're having a problem with that. And I can understand having a problem with it, but it seems to me that we just don't let it drag on, you come in with a, um, what you call it? Amendment, a permanent amendment. Application, and we can amend the approval to whatever it is that we feel is appropriate. So we can't really, that they will never be able, as long as they don't combine those parcels and they don't have a permit amendment, then we're all at a stalemate. And I'm not quite sure about the commencement of remediation work, the construction was never held up by COVID nineteen. So I don't quite know what, I'm, I'm looking for other opinions from the commission.
Wasn't that remediation work pretty minor, ripping up some blacktop or something? I, I don't know what would hold them up from that. Or what the impact would be right now. Does anybody recall what that remediation was?
It was so long ago, I don't remember, let's see, um. Hold on.
If, if I'm not mistaken, it wa, I mean, there had been some remediation, um, it was along the, uh, buffer of the wetlands. Um, and yes, you're right, it was, it was kinda going back towards where asphalt was or process piles were.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how, uh, COVID would prevent them from doing that.
Or I thought I might have something.
Um, go into, uh, older, maybe under older, there might be a previous, go back one, like previous meetings. Top one. I don't know what's in it, but. Well, there's a submitted map.
Uh, my computer did not like this.
That's a big drawing too, so. Now this says photos, I don't know.
Yeah, it didn't like that, whatever it was.
Yeah. What about the one above it, Donna? It ju, it says remediation, I don't know, it might just be a document, but. Yep, nevermind.
Okay, that's just for. Yeah, I'd like to see that, the, the certificate of decision, because I think that should have some information that we might need. Oh, yeah, it's up, it's up, sorry, hold on. This is the decision right here. Okay, can you keep going down? Absolutely. Alright, hold it, hold it, hold it. Alright, yeah, keep going down, please. This is all that, what they submitted, here's the conditions of approval. Alright.
It does tell you a little bit.
Alright, see, condition number two, B two, it says, um, if remediation is not completed by this date, the permit will be considered null and void. That is the work permit, not just the remediation permit. Um, now consider it hasn't even been started, I don't think.
No, because the conditions haven't been met, so there's been no pre-construction con, um, or any, as far as I know, there's been no.
Yeah. I don't even know if the bond has been placed or not.
That, that's what I was gonna say, we haven't done any of that stuff, if I, if I'm not mistaken.
Hmm. Because they're stuck on submitting the map, they.
Right.
Okay, so if they're stuck on, on doing, um, submitting the map, we should ask them to rectify that by submitting, um, a modification. I believe this is the way, Barbara, please correct me if I'm wrong. Yes, you, you can handle it that way. Cause it doesn't seem like there's any other way to solve that particular issue. Right, I agree. Um, so if they come in with a, with a permit modification, is that an application or just a form, I'm not sure exactly what it is? We would consider that. Application for, to modify. Okay. And it should be fairly simple, since it's just that one issue that we're having in that respect, for the per, permit modification. The remediation, um, what does everybody think of the concept of giving them ninety more days, since that was what the governor gave everybody for this whole COVID, even though we are pretty sure the COVID situation had absolutely nothing to do with this? Um, if we gave them the extra ninety days, but that, at that point, that B two, uh, clause B two in our conditions takes over, and if it's not done in ninety days and all the other, um, conditions met, then the permit is null and void and they'll have to start all over again. Does that sound like an appropriate approach, Barbara? Yeah, it's in the commission's discretion.
Okay, I'd like to make that motion that we provide a ninety day extension.
I second it.
So the motion is that, um, you're granting it, but the work needs to be completed within those thirty days, so they need to get the map, get the meeting, do the work and be done with it. Jim, did you mean?
Yes.
Questions again, but yes. Um, did your motion mean that you wanted to extend them ninety days to complete the remediation work, independent of the other conditions?
Ninety days would take them to, yeah, I'd prefer to give them the ninety days, and if they can't complete it, then they're, or come down, they can come and modify their permit in that period, and if they can't do that, then it's all gone.
Well, the permit modification is independent of the remediation. That is for development.
I understand.
Okay, so what's the right way to word this? Um, so am I hearing that?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to give them a ninety day extension on their, on their permit, as well as their, as their remediation.
I'm trying to figure out if that's clear enough. Because their permit is still good until the remediation is not done. That didn't make any sense at all, um. The, the permit life is dependent on the completion of the remediation.
Yes.
So if we extend the remediation by ninety days, and therefore B two, no, actually B two stays the same. The remediation still has to be done, if it isn't by the, by by the ninety day period from October fifteenth, then the, the permit becomes null and void. Yes, no?
Yeah, I thought that's what I said.
Okay, what is it that, exactly that you wanna say?
I wanna give them ninety days to complete the remediation, and they're asking for what, a ninety day permit? A permit extension, correct?
Extending the deadline.
To, to remediation deadline.
So, it's, um, hold on one second, we so the conditions were supposed to be addressed by April seventh, twenty twenty. They got a ninety day extension, that then extended it more. Then they got a second ninety day extension, and that extended it more, and now they're at their third ninety day for reading condition A.
Okay, so I, and my motion is to give them that ninety days to meet condition A.
And then if it's not, then it's null and void? Uh, not just condition A.
It's also B one, right?
Yeah, you, you also mean the, the commencement of, actually the completion of remediation work, do you not, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, so. Okay. Commencement means begin, okay?
Yeah, it says commencement, not completion.
Yeah, I mean, they're asking for thirty days to start the remediation? No, no. Commencement can mean both things, that's what. So unfortunately, this is another one, this is where you, this is where it gets into trouble. Because this was a double edged sword, similar to the, what's before us right now, that it's commercial site development and remediation for a large project. So unfortunately, it had several deadlines. So the date of approval was January eighth, two thousand and twenty. They needed to start their work. The remediation completion date was October fifteenth, twenty twenty. They needed to get their condition A done, excuse me, by April seventh. And that was not done, and that part of getting that done was to start the project for remediation.
And there was no extension given on that part?
There was, this is, now they are requesting a third extension on that part, that's what we're discussing. So they managed to get extensions granted that they haven't met their condition A, and therefore have not started their remediation. So there, I'm assuming that they are thinking that it's pushing everything off.
So they needed an extension for both condition A and the remediation?
Condition A is part of the remediation.
Usually, you guys give 260 days as a condition A deadline. When it's a remediation, you give 90 or 60.
The original, the 90 days, the original 90 days ended when?
April 7, 2020.
When did the governor's order come out?
Um, that I do not know.
The one that extended certain deadline, land use deadlines by 90 days?
Yeah.
Do we know if their second-
It might have been June, but I'm not 100% sure.
Do we know if their second extension used that same reasoning? The same 90-day?
Yeah, it did.
So they're double dipping?
Triple dipping.
They're triple dipping.
Regardless of what the governor's extension was, this seems like a practical approach that you're talking about, Lois.
Well, would you make the appropriate motion, because I'm not really in position to do that at the moment? So Jim, first of all, do you withdraw your motion, because we're confused?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, BJ, you want to try coining up a motion for us?
All right, I have limited familiarity with this action, this was before my time. So I don't know most of the details you've been discussing here, so I'm gonna take a pass on that.
Okay. I will tell you this, I just did the date calculator from the original deadline of April 7. Now, they've had two 90-day extensions, so 180 days from April 7, 2020, brings us to October 4, 2020. So I believe the request came in before that, so if you then add another 90 days to it. Hold on one second.
Brings us approximately to the beginning of the year, that's 2021.
It brings us to January 2, 2021, yes.
Now, there's gonna be an issue with that, because they can't do plantings and stuff in the middle of the winter. Correct? I don't know, we're in a rock and a hard place here.
Would it make sense to deny their extension and require that they file that modification? Would that move the ball forward?
I think that we could do that.
Well, then their application expires, right?
Well, again, that's up to the commission. The commercial site development, that part of the permit is a five-year permit, and it goes to January 8, 2025. But this is like, we really shouldn't be accepting, we shouldn't be accepting development and remediation at the same time. They should be two separate applications always.
Agreed.
So all we're looking for is an extension to the remediation, yeah. Lois, I'm getting close to putting my motion back on the table again.
All right, Jim, if you want to put it on the table, we'll see what flies.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion, we give them an extension to the deadline for remediation of 90 days.
That deals with the remediation. How about the filing of the plans for the notification permit?
All conditions, including the remediation.
Do I hear a second?
Can I get a clarification, then, based on their request? You're saying item A, and item A1A and item B1 to grant them the extension?
Well, you're gonna have to, you have to show this to me on my drawing here. Item what? One? Item A1A? And item A1B?
Item A1A and B1.
This is the document, the letter from the packet.
The B1 is the commencement of the remediation work. But I don't think that we should use commencement as the word. I think completion is what we're looking for.
Yeah, completion.
I'll second that.
All right, so, my understanding, Jim Stewart has made a motion to extend by 90 days. I'm getting a lot of feedback, I can hear this, Jim, would you turn off your, Jim, could you please mute?
Perfect.
Thank you. Give a 90-day extension to complete the remediation work. And that would be the drop-dead date, if I'm understanding it properly. And either combine all the parcels within that time, or bring us a permit modification. Is, does that clarify your motion, Jim?
Yes, it's perfect.
Do I hear a second? BJ, I believe you seconded that?
And I'll second it again.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Any extensions? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Donna, did you get all that?
So, grant the 90 days to complete the remediation work, and either combine the parcels or submit a modification application?
Right.
Okay, I got it. And it was, who made, I'm sorry, it was Jim and Clark?
BJ.
BJ. Okay, perfect. All righty, thank you very much for that.
Now, we have to get Keith back somehow.
I'm back.
Okay, hi, it's all yours.
Okay, 51. Okay, now we are at the extension here. IWC agent activity reports, 12 agent approvals, IAA 2020-22, 588 Pepper Street, parking lot detention basin. Nish, you wanna run us through that real quick?
Um, this was one where we had to determine, the commission had determined that the work associated with that application should be done as an IAA. It's an existing building that's expanding. And just a little bit of the work was in the Upland Review area, which had to do with a little bit of the parking lot detention basin.
IAA 2020-23, 25 West Main Lane, Ched.
Ched in the Upland Review area, pretty straightforward.
Permitted uses as of right, IPU-2018-01, Department of Works, Road Repair, Replacement and General Maintenance, IW regulation section 4.2C, expiration 3.2. IPU 2020-18, 1366, a road turnpike, two chicken coops.
This was a very old violation that was determined, it's a farm, and the work was established before the wetlands regulations were involved. So it was, we decided to do a permitted as of right, if the commission has no issue, just for the fact that he's got some chicken coops in the Upland Review area.
Correct. Enforcement deliberations. Team, worries on complete remediation submissions. We ended up with none tonight, correct?
Yeah.
15 complete initiatives agenda is determined by the commission. I don't think there's anything there. Administrative view, enforcement issues, nothing. Status updates, does anybody have any status updates? I think so, off to the minutes of September 23, 2020.
I got him here somewhere. I had some minor topographical changes, but I can't find them, right? Oh, yeah, they are, never mind, sorry. Too many papers. All right, I move to approve with some changes. Okay, not that one. On page three, paragraph two, Commissioner Spence referenced the previous project that she learned about at the Kacke Wick conference. I didn't want it to make it sound like it was a Monroe project.
Okay.
On four paragraphs up from the bottom of the same page, it was Chairman Romano, strictly a typo.
I'm sorry, where was that, Lois?
It was on the same page, page three.
I see it.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you.
No problem. Then on page five, under IWV 2020-09, the end of the first sentence. Oh, it was just missing a verb. She explained that this violation originated when zoning staff visited a nearby property. I think that's it. Okey-dokey. Thank you.
Okay, so you have a motion to accept amendments with changes from Commissioner Spence, the second. Second, second by Commissioner Gingrich. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Pass unanimously. Okay, we have Regulation Amendment Committee, anything? No, Public Outreach Committee, anything? No? Okay, we will go to our favorite, which is IWV 2020-03R, 64 Cambridge Drive, or independent site development expiration. We have all, well, I don't think so, I think we predetermined already, we have not all received the proposals from the four environmental firms. But let's first start by reading it as a layer of Chris Sullivan. The record. Just to get that out of the way. Lois, did you like to read that, is it a record, or Donna, somebody?
I'm sorry, Keith, you dropped out again, I didn't hear what you said, something about Sullivan.
Yeah, Chris Sullivan wrote a letter to us for tonight. We read it into the record, is my question.
I don't have that letter.
Or should it just be?
I can read it.
All right, Donna will read it, it's in the record.
It's Exhibit 36, and again, once again, if you're looking to read it, it is on the town website under meeting agenda, October 14, 2020. The letter is dated October 14, 2020, and it's to the Inland-Wetland Commission in regards to consultant hiring. And it reads as follows. "Good evening, I apologize for not being able to attend the meeting tonight. I have a standing conflict on the second Wednesday of each month. I wanted to share a few thoughts on the hiring of a consultant for this project. I will not weigh in on one firm versus another, nor will I weigh in on cost or reputability of a firm. Each of the firms that have submitted bids are all listed on the state contract 18PSX0153 with the Department of Administrative Services, DAS. What I will say is that the importance of doing this work is to make sure that the commission is doing your due diligence to protect the natural resources, ecology, and wetlands on and adjacent to this property application, and also to protect the town of Monroe from any potential legal challenges to your decision. I will recommend it is important to understand a full characterization of the property and what is in the ground and groundwater to establish a baseline for comparison with future analysis. Having expert data analysis, quality control, additional sampling and analysis as needed, and interpretation of results on the record of this public hearing strengthens the final decision of this commission. This is important regardless of what that decision is for this site, approval or denial. It is important that you feel comfortable that the consultant that you hire is willing, able, and ready to do the work to fully assess the hydrology and hydrogeology of the property in this application. It is also critical that they are able to do what is needed to make you feel confident in your final decision-making process. Sincerely, Chris Sullivan, Executive Director, Southwest Conservation District."
Thank you, Donna. Okay, we have, I believe, a represent, well, at least one representative of the environmental firms that sent the proposal. Tell by some of the names. Right? And would we, I mean, I'm gonna ask the commissioners. You want to hear from each one of the proposals? Meaning like, if there's a representative, like, I can just tell by some of the names, Kate Engler, Oriello. Oh, there's another one, I thought I saw. Do you want them to kind of present their proposal? Talk about it, speak on what they're proposing? Anyone, can anybody hear me?
I can hear you, I'm trying to think about questions.
We don't have to ask questions yet, we can have them kind of, what do you call it, present their proposal to us verbally.
I'd say as long as it's brief.
I would say we give them each five minutes.
Good.
Okay, we're gonna do that? Everybody in favor?
Okay.
All right, let's start with we have any, listen, probably don't, but start with Weston and Sampson. Representative from Weston, Weston and Sampson here tonight?
There is one.
This is Martin Beeler.
This is Malcolm Beeler.
Malcolm, please state your name to the commission and then proceed with five minutes uh explaining your uh your proposal.
Uh yes, my name is Malcolm Beeler. I'm with Weston and Sampson. We have office in Rocky Hill, Connecticut. Uh the proposal that we provided to the uh I W C was to um provide the necessary expertise. Uh Mr. Frank Ketchel is uh our proposed uh hydrogeologist, hydro and to do the analysis of data. And then I'm a L E P with thirty years' experience. Um and I would uh review uh other analytical data that was discussed in the uh submittals from uh solely engineering. Um, we tried to generate something that would be uh flexible uh and would also put the the burden of the work on the uh developer to submit. Uh we would provide observation um and and potentially co-sampling of anything collected in the field by um uh the developer. And then uh, you know, review the data as it was submitted and provide um uh clarification to the town as needed.
Okay, um you have, um so let's just, because this time is kind of um short, I think, with this application. If you were to be awarded the contract, what do you think you're providing that? There is an unimpeded uh flow of information. What do you think your your timeframe would be to complete?
Well, I mean, it depends on the complexity of the of the submittals, but I mean, we could be, you know, uh jumping immediately on to the data review and turning things around in a week or two, depending on the level of information and the complexity. But uh, you know, there's nothing impeding us from being very responsive to the to the I W C.
Hey, do any commission members have any questions for um uh Mr. Beeler this moment?
No question.
No questions?
No questions.
Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, you quoted uh not to exceed of ten thousand dollars. Is is, do you think that the, is that a not to exceed? You'll finish what we need done for that? Or are you just gonna come back and say, I've gotten my ten thousand dollars and I'm gonna need more?
Well, if you look at the proposal, you know, we gave you rates to perform sampling and to perform, you know, hourly rate for the people that we propose to do the work. Um and then, you know, and for each task assigned by the I W C, we would give you a budget and a uh uh and a uh schedule to complete the work. Because, you know, um if 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 the I W C decides that they want ten wells sampled, then it's gonna be a lot more expensive. But if there's only a couple, or it depends on the level of effort um that's assigned. But, you know, without a fixed scope of work, I tried to as best possible, give you the numbers that we would uh be using to develop uh budgets as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Anything from anybody else? Ross or or Clark? No? Okay, uh, thank you, um, Mr. Beeler. Um, we'll move on to uh Arcadis. You're from Arcadis, type? Uh, let's see. No, I mean, the letter was from Russell. I guess it doesn't look like anybody from Arcadis is here. We're gonna go to N Safe. Is anybody here from N Safe? Letter from Brian McCarthy. Hey, anybody there? And we have. Oh, hold on. I just saw a green light.
No, sorry, that's anticipation of the next group. Sorry.
What's that?
I'm sorry, that was anticipation of the next.
Which is L'Oreal?
Yes, L'Oreal Engineering Associates.
Okay, well, you guys um have the floor.
Alright, thank you.
Name on the record, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, my name is Tom Salamino. I'm a P E L E P with L'Oreal Engineering Associates of Plainbough, Connecticut. Um, we have reviewed the information. We've already actually started our review in preparation of the proposal that's been requested by the commission. Um, I am part of the review team. Uh my expertise is um uh as an L E P is primarily um site investigation, mediation, and material handling. Uh, the project manager is a is John Bogdansky, is a professional geologist and L E P. Other parts of the detective little team are um, excuse me, Karen Goldenberg, another professional geologist and L E P. Um, we recognize there's really two issues for this project, really the hydrogeology of the of the filling of the the large excavation, um as well as the the handling of the material, the material acceptance, um and what type of impacts that may have on the uh the environment, uh particularly the uh the groundwater and the wetlands. Um, we have quite a bit of experience in the state of Connecticut, a lot of experience with similar wetland projects. Uh, we also have a lot of experience with a um a large um remediation project, a tire project, um tire pond project, a similar uh landfilling uh in North Haven, Connecticut. So we think we're um more than suitable, meet the requirements for the town, and we're ready to go. And we've already been looking at a lot of the information and and going through it.
Okay. Um, do you feel um that you have a full understanding of the scope of work? Or do you think that it may still be uh um, what's the word? Uh, spelled out more clearly?
I I think it's, I think it's very clear, but I think as with anything as as involved as this, it is going to to morph. Um, there's gonna be information generated as the applicant does their investigation and as we go through the review. So to say that I think, you know, we all know where it's gonna go or what what it's gonna involve. I think we know the first pieces is to digest the information and make sure that we understand it and make sure that we're able to present that and represent the town in that manner.
Okay, um last, the next question is uh your your timeframe um to take on this project.
Um, as I said, we've already started looking at the information. Um, you know, we're ready to go as soon as we had authorization. We're starting it tomorrow. Um, you know, we think that we could have, we'd like to see the site, walk the site. We'd also like to uh sit down uh with town folks, obviously through Zooming and whatnot. Um, but, you know, we're ready to set meetings and and be moving forward as early as next week. I'd say Friday, but as early as next week.
Uh, Tom, does anybody else from your team have anything to say? Are you the only one who's gonna speak on behalf of your company?
Um, I'll ask them if they'd like to. We have uh Dave Ferrick, who's a senior vice president of the company. He's a professional engineer, L E P, the project officer on it. And we have Kate Engler, who's an associate with L'Oreal Engineering. And she was uh involved with the preparation of proposals. So I'll open up to Dave or Kate. See if they have anything.
Yeah, uh, this is Dave Ferrick. Um, also a professional engineer and L E P in the state of Connecticut. I would serve if working with the town as the uh project officer. Um, I think Tom covered most of our points. Again, we've been already looking at the materials. Just one thing I'd like to add in terms of uh experiences, that we've we've been, uh, we were contracted by the state of Connecticut. We're still working for them on uh the significant closure project known as the Tire Pond that's located in Hampden in North Haven, Connecticut. And um we developed material acceptable, acceptability protocol for them. And uh helped manage over and bringing uh over a million yards of uh cover material into the site. So have again, working knowledge with the state, working on their behalf, and uh there's at least some similarities to to uh this site.
That for you, um, that for your presentation? Okay. Uh, does any of the commissioners have any questions for the representative from Lor- 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 L'Oreal?
No questions here.
Uh, Commissioner Spence?
Only one. Um, the the forty-five years of experience, I'm assuming that the company has been in existence for forty-five years? And not, it's not combined experience of your employees?
That's that's correct. We are founded nineteen seventy-five.
Awesome.
So as individuals, I have over thirty years myself, uh twenty-seven with the firm.
Commissioner Stewart? Good. Good? Anybody else? Okay, uh, thank you for your uh proposal. It's middle. We have um, so there's only two. Do you have any, uh, let's have some open discussion. Any commissioners on discussing any of these applications?
I'd love it. I'd love to hear from the applicant if they have have any any reservations or 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 opinions.
Okay, we'll go over to uh Mr. Soli.
Uh, good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name's Kevin Soli, a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Soli Engineering. Um, we certainly appreciate all of the uh various consultants who submitted proposals. They are obviously um very broad in their scopes and uh price range. Um, uh, we certainly don't have any um particular opinions about the firms. I think uh Chris Sullivan's letter was actually well said in that um they're all very qualified firms. Um, so we we don't have any issue with any of their qualifications or anything like that. Um, I don't have, uh, I I'll certainly um pose the question to Attorney Finn, to he if he wants to opine. But I did have an update for the commission regarding the status of our uh our uh our analysis being done by W S P. And I could provide that for the commission now to kind of give everyone an update of where we stand in schedule. Because we have gotten some preliminary results back and they're all very favorable. Um, but I'm not sure if you want to hear that now or if you'd like to hear from Attorney Finn, if he has any other opinions regarding the scopes. Obviously, they're very broad. Um, uh, you know, I think I I think once, I I'm optimistic that once our additional reports are completed by W S P and additional data submitted, that'll certainly um streamline the overall scopes, because we believe that once uh whomever is selected has a chance to really evaluate and dig into the body of evidence we've provided as part of this application. Um, we're confident that that should uh address their their concerns, and then they can just work with us and the commission to refine um uh what may need to be incorporated in the approval letter.
Okay, uh, Mr. Finn, if you'd like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I uh, first of all, I.
Say your name for the record, please.
Yes, uh, yes, Steve Finn, representing the applicant. Uh, you know, we just got these uh proposals uh today and they're they're quite lengthy. Um, and uh our group did not have a chance really to to discuss them, but uh as it turns out, uh, my client informed me that the L'Oreal group, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, and I apologize if I'm not, has done work for uh uh the managers of other companies, particularly Arnold Carp and and Paul Stone, who are are obviously involved in this project as well. And uh frankly, based on that, there's a, there's a conflict that uh uh my clients do not want to waive. So unfortunately, that would, that would knock uh L'Oreal out. Uh, um, uh, other than that, uh, you know, uh, we have no other comments again with regard, other than the ones that Mr. Soli made, because we really didn't have a chance to look at this that closely. Uh, we would ask for the commission just to be mindful of cost. And as you've done, Mr. Chairman, uh, so far, be mindful of time. I I thought that, I know L'Oreal is actually out now, but I thought we didn't really get a direct answer about how long it would take for them to do their analysis. So, um, so that's all, those are all my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Finn. Uh, Barbara. In regards to that, what are your thoughts of that uh conflict of interest?
Yeah, I mean. If it's a conflict that they're not waiving, then that's it.
Sorry, repeat that again, please?
I said, if it's a conflict that the applicant is not waiving, then, you know, we we have to let that one, put that one aside.
Okay.
Um, hi, this is Tom Salamino.
Hold on, Tom, Tom, Tom.
Oh, sorry.
One second, please.
Sorry, I apologize.
The um, we, do you wanna, do you wanna hear um from the intervenor on these uh applications?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Um, I I guess my first question.
Name for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joel Green of the Law Offices of Green and Gross, um, representing Peter Metropolis as an intervenor. Um, it seems to me, um, the first question I would have is, um, as to the nature of the conflict, what that conflict is specifically. I mean, to determine if a conflict does exist in fact.
Okay. Um, any anything else from, before I get back to them?
Well, um, similar to, I think, everyone, I have not had a chance to go through um all of the uh proposals, although I note that they are each uh, in my view, reliable firms. And uh, so I, I'm not sure the commission can go wrong. I do think that um, unfortunately, this is gonna be somewhat of a fluid situation depending on uh what the findings are of each consultant after the initial review. So it may be a a stepped uh process. So I think the commission should bear that in mind. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Uh, I'll give it back to uh Thomas Salamino.
I I'm sorry about that. Uh, can you hear me now? I had, I actually hung up when I put meant to mute myself. Um, I just wanted to say that I'm.
Say your name again.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Uh, yes, this is Tom Salamino from L'Oreal Engineering. Um, I I'm not aware of at this moment of any work that we have done directly for Arnold Carp. Um, it's something that certainly would look into and identify and remove ourselves for consideration if that is in fact the case.
Okay, that would, that would probably be, I think, the most prudent thing to do going forward. Um, because we haven't really been presented with any, you know, fat, you know, some, any type of factual data. Um, but I think that's probably the best way for us to move forward. Thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, uh, my commissioners, what else do you feel you need, if anything, from the four applications in order to make the decision?
Well, question that's, excuse me, not necessarily related to that, but is how soon will we find out if L'Oreal, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, will be removing itself from consideration?
Uh, that's a good question. Thank you, Commissioner Spence. Let me just pass that to Thomas Salamino again.
Uh, yes, if you can hear me, this is Thomas Salamino of L'Oreal Engineering. Uh, we would have an answer for you uh by the close of business tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so. Commissioners, I know some of you have even seen the proposals yet, correct?
Right.
I printed them off this evening. I have not a chance to read all of them yet, so I don't know much about it. I wouldn't be able to give you an answer till the next meeting. Okay. Anybody, any other commissioners?
I, I have, there are some aspects of all of them that I, I really like. And, um, there are some parts of some proposals that I would like to see within whoever's, whoever we do choose, can we add some or a, a couple of particular things that we liked? That was not in their proposal, but we heard from somebody else that was in their proposal. Does that make any sense?
I think we could, I think we could certainly implement that, uh, line of questioning to the, uh, the, the, the four applicants. I'm thinking that, um, if anybody has, any of the commissioners have any questions to the applicant? Um, well, I guess there are considered applicants here also. One second, Mr. Green. Um, then let's get, uh, let's get, uh, let's get them written down in an email. Let's send them to Donna and have her consolidate. And then forward the questions to the, the four propos, the four firms that gave us proposals. Does that sound right, everybody?
Sounds good.
Okay.
I guess so, sure.
Good. That work for you, Donna?
Sorry about that. Yes, that's just fine.
Okay, great. Okay, uh, Mr. Green, go ahead.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, once again, um, so that we can avoid, and so that in fairness to Loriero, um, I think it would be fair to ask the applicant to articulate, uh, what the specific conflict is so that Loriero can search their records and verify that. And then, um, the second, um, part is after, you know, we go through this process on this, perhaps we can have a discussion about, uh, the scope of the work, um, that the commission expects.
Okay, um, that is, that was, that's definitely a good question. Do you want to respond, you want to respond to that?
Yes, my, my, my client informs me that there was, uh, that, uh, they were involved in a, a project at sixteen Cross Street in New Canaan that Loriero or, or, uh, an employee was involved in. Uh, so that's one project. If, uh, there are others, we will pass them along. Uh, with regard to the scope of the work, um, you know, I, that's been clearly, um, set forth in your motion, which was discussed on two prior occasions. And actually, uh, Chris Sullivan, uh, who's the one who suggested the retention of an independent expert, went into great detail at the last meeting, listing all the areas that he thought the independent expert should cover. And the commission did a very, very good job of in making sure to incorporate every suggestion that Mr. Sullivan made into that motion. And interestingly enough, uh, in Mr. Sullivan's letter to you today, um, he had ample opportunity to discuss maybe if he had forgotten about something that should have been within the scope, to add that into his letter, and he did not. So, uh, I think the commission has made it clear that they do want to rely on the Southwest Conservation District and, uh, their recommendations with regard to this application. Uh, I think the commission has done a very good job of doing that. And now to, in, in Mr. Sullivan's absence, to sort of go beyond that for really would, what would be sort of a third time, I, I don't think is appropriate. And I think it's an indication that the intervenor is merely trying to make this as, as long of a process, as complex of a process, and frankly, try to run the clock out on this application. And, uh, I, I don't see how, at this point, the commission needs to revisit the scope of the work until at least, uh, uh, you've gotten the additional information that Mr. Soli, uh, mentioned earlier tonight. And you get your own independent expert on board, who may at one point say, look, we, I, I recommend we do something else. But to do that now, I, I really don't think is fair or, or accurate or, or smart, frankly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Finn. I, uh, one second. Um, you know, what I've heard from the two, uh, all of them, I think, sounded like, and, and this is just my interpretation, they were pretty clear on what this project needs or we need from them on this project. And I think the other one had, um, had some questions about the scope of work. So going forward, I think, Donna, when we, when we do send out these questions, I think the first question would be to all four, is do any of them need any clarification on the scope of work? And that would be a good, uh, thing to get out, you know, sooner than later, so that we can make sure that if they, they've gotten any other questions or answers, especially if it's something that's stated in, in one or two different letters or, or from whoever had, you know, put together the original scope of work. Okay, um, uh, Mr. Green? Mr. Green, go ahead. I can't hear you.
I think you've frozen. Mr. Chairman, can you hear me now?
Yes, please say your name again for the record.
Yes, again. I'm just, I just want to mute my, uh, connection here online. I don't know if the administrator can do that. I'm having-
I can mute, mute Joel Green.
All right, so, um, you can, so you can hear me now, I assume?
Yes.
So what I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, is, um, that, you know, you had made a motion and, um, but this is a motion of this commission, so this commission is free to amend its motion. And this is again, a fluid situation. And I would, um, ask for an opportunity to, uh, present some, um, information from our consultants to the commission for its consideration regarding the scope. Um, and just for, um, information to the commission. And the commission may decide that it is prudent to, um, supplement the scope. Commission might provide that information to the consultant. Certainly, uh, Mr. Sullivan, um, in the interim, has an opportunity to, uh, review our suggestions. And, uh, I think that will yield the best, um, outcome.
Mr. Green, I'm trying to remember whether you guys have actually made, or your team has actually made a, a presentation to us in regards or, or spoken, you know, on behalf of your status?
Uh, we have not.
So you're trying to, are you trying to initiate that now? Is that what you're trying to do?
Well, I think that essential, central to our presentation and from the, um, inception, we've pointed out that, um, the application is missing information. I think that we are prepared to make, um, at least, um, commence our presentation on the intervention, if you'd like, right now.
Well, there's, I guess there's two, I think, um, I think what we're gonna, you know, the commission now is, is gonna focus in on, on clarifying these, um, these proposals. So if you have anything to say that you think would help the commissioners, um, you know, with clear, you know, clarify, with their clarification work, I think that would be the prudent thing to do at this time.
I'm, I'm happy to do that. We are, the intervenors happy to do that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, but before you do that, can I be heard for just a, a brief minute on that?
Sure, go ahead, Attorney Finn. Say your name.
Uh, Steve Finn, for the record, representing the applicant. This motion to hire an independent expert has been discussed at this, before this commission on September ninth and September twenty-third. At each one of those meetings, the, uh, chairman, uh, very much allowed the intervenor and his experts and his attorneys to speak at length about the retention of an independent expert. So they've had plenty of opportunity to be heard twice. The motion was, uh, was deliberated at length after hearing from the intervenor and his experts about the scope of the work that should be done by the independent expert. And now what seems to be happening is that we're gonna have a, a third opportunity for the intervenor and his experts to speak about the scope of the work of the expert. I don't disagree that you can amend your motion, uh, and, and I never tried to say that you couldn't. I'm just talking about what's fair and procedure and trying to move this application along. What's gonna happen now is you're gonna hear from the, the intervenor and his applicants. What are you gonna do now? You're gonna send out another proposal to all these experts again with an expanded proposal? It doesn't make any sense. You, you, part of, you have a catchall in your original motion that allows the independent expert to ask to do additional work. What further safeguards do you need?
For us to take, for us to take a decision on who we're gonna choose, we kind of gotta talk to these companies, find out what they have to offer.
Oh, I have no, I have no, no objection to you talking to the companies. And in fact, I, I would encourage you to do so. What I, what I don't want to see happen, and I think, again, I, I, I talk about this before, about running out the clock. And I managed this point to you months ago, that the intervenor should have told us long ago what was missing from our application. And, Mr. Chairman, you may recall, I, you agree with that. Tell us back two months ago what you thought was missing from our application, so we could attend to it, get the information in and move the application along. But all this really is, is an attempt to run out the clock, and we are starting to be up against it. What is wrong with, with going forward? Retain an expert now. You have a catchall in your motion that says if that expert wants to ask for additional information or do additional work, he's already been approved under your motion to do that. And if the intervenor wants to be heard at some point after the, uh, the, the independent expert has come back, I, I assume he'll have the right to do so. But to expand this now in a vacuum, without, first of all, hearing, getting additional information that the, the applicant wants to submit and hearing from your own independent expert, uh, I, I think is just gonna keep this delaying and delaying and delaying. So I would respectfully submit that if the intervenor wants to present their, their, their findings tonight or their points tonight, please, we've been waiting and waiting and waiting for that, because we want to respond to that. But included, but included in that to expand the motion again is not appropriate and is gonna lead to problems, real problems.
Mr. Finn, I was not, hold on, one second, Mr. Green. I was not suggesting that we change our motion. I was, I was suggesting that if there was anything the intervenor had to offer to help, you know, guide us through, um, any questions about the scope of work, any questions to the application. But I think maybe the best thing to do is to, because I believe, Mr. Green, I'll give you a second, a second opportunity to respond. He was willing to do one or the other. And if you want, and it might be maybe in our best interest, as you, as you suggested, is to start to hear their findings and their presentation. It's, uh, Mr. Green, how do you feel about that?
Um, other than having some audio visual issues, which has me on the phone, what I was gonna suggest is, just very briefly, I can present Evan Glass of Alta Environmental, who can just provide the commission with some guidance. And frankly, in the time that Mr. Finn, uh, made his speech, we could have probably had this, um, um, out into the record. And, uh, I don't intend to be long, and I think it would be very informative to the commission. And, uh, that's what I would propose.
Okay, Mr. Green.
Mr. Chairman, very briefly, just, just the problem again, as I said, is that if it's-
Let me finish my question.
Okay.
If we're, if I were to give Mr. Glass five minutes, do you have any other thing else you want to try to accomplish this evening?
Um, I, it's really, um, up to the commission. I, as I understood it, the immediate issue, um, that the chair was concerned with was, um, the scope and, um, issues on the hiring of these consultants. I, I'm, I really don't want to get involved in, uh, the back and forth that Attorney Finn is seeking here. But I will say that we have been asking for information consistently. We have submitted a list of information. But for the purposes of this moment, I would defer to, um, Evan Glass. And, uh, I think that he could be of great assistance to the commission.
Mr. Green, is your team, uh, prepared to present findings or, or partially whatever you've got up until the next meeting?
We are. I think we, I believe we are, and, um, we can, uh, make a presentation. What I would propose is, I need to, I'm gonna try to reboot my computer right now. So I need to leave the hearing for a moment and I'll return.
But I'm talking, Mr. Green, I'm talking about the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, we could definitely, um, well-
Because we're already, we're, we're approaching ten o'clock, okay? We spent, you know, a good amount of time, unless there's anything else that's, you know, pertinent for right now. Like to at least get, you know, we'll, we'll plan for, for your full presentation next meeting.
Well, that's fine. I, I would like, though, to allow, uh, Mr. Glass just to, um, address the scope issue, if the chair would indulge us.
We're still gonna do that. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to set a, you know, set a schedule for the rest of this meeting and-
Yeah, we'd be happy to present at the next meeting, yeah.
Okay, great. Is that okay with you, Mr. Finn, for your applicant?
Well, I, I, I still think it would be best to get this information, we've been waiting for this information for months. They, they intervened back on May twenty-ninth, Mr. Chairman. That's, that's, what, about, uh, five months ago? And it's, it's just absurd that, uh, and, and besides what you're, uh, Mr. Chairman, they haven't even established that they have a right to intervene. In fact, they've only made allegations. They, they have to show that there actually is environmental harm that would be caused by this application. They haven't done that. In fact, this is a, a restoration application.
And it comes over our heads. So if you want to, if you want to get a response to that, I'm gonna have to refer to our attorney.
Well, I, I, I think having raised the point, we might as well go forward with it. And Attorney Schonberg, as you know, in order for an intervenor to intervene, they have to show that they, that they've, uh, that there is really our environmental harm gonna be caused by this project. And this project, if anything, is, is, is a restoration project. It's, 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 it's in response to notice of violations that were issued for conditions that have existed for over fifteen years. It's the commission that wanted the applicant to come in with a restorative, uh, plan. And that's exactly what we've done. Now, how can that be bad for the environment when the commission wants us to restore these wetlands? And the-
Attorney Finn, I don't know the answer to that question. I'm not a scientist. They haven't made their presentation. They say they're going to make their presentation. I agree with you. We need to hear from them. And the commission will have to hear the evidence that the intervenor presents. I don't believe just because something is presented as a remediation application that necessarily means that there, that there cannot be a validity to an intervenor's application, uh, in, in intervenor's petition. We just have to hear the evidence on that. So I, I mean, I'm not, and I'm not saying there is validity. We don't know yet. I do agree with you. Ultimately, the commission has to decide whether there is unreasonable pollution, et cetera. But we haven't heard the evidence yet. I would recommend, just as the commissioner gave the applicant the opportunity to speak with regard to just this, the scope of the work or anything dealing with the experts, if there is a short presentation, I agree it should be short, that the intervenor has, uh, five minutes as the commissioner, uh, as the chairman recommend- uh, as the chairman recommended, let's do it and move forward.
Okay. Well, that's certainly within, that's certainly within the discretion of the commission and, and-
It is, it is in the discretion of, of the commission. I'm, I'm simply, I think I'm parroting what the, what the chairman has already said. Uh, but I, I don't think, we, we certainly can't make any kind of, I don't think this is the point in time that we can say whether the intervenor's petition is, is, you know, has validity or not, because we haven't heard the evidence yet. So.
Well, look, they have submitted reports, uh, that, that don't establish any environmental harm from what we were able to determine and, but, you know, as I said, they're, they're, I'm sure they're going to present, but I think giving them, uh, the ability to talk about this, uh, to revisit for a third time the scope of the work for the independent expert, when they haven't even demonstrated any environmental harm, is just not procedurally correct. And you, you may be right, but at this point, until they show that, right, but we've been, we've been trying to move this thing along. We didn't object the last time, the last two times they spoke about the scope of the work for the expert. Now we're here at the, for the third time. I've already made the point about the timing issue, but I'll make it again. If Mr. Glass convinces the commission to amend their motion, you're going to have to resend this, uh, these, this additional items out to the experts again. And you're going to be delayed again. It's so much better to allow the, your independent expert to guide you on this than to start to expand the scope of this project again for the independent expert. I've taken enough of your time, Mr. Chairman. I know you want to move things along. Uh, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Glass, if there's anything that you can shed light on about these four proposals, the commissioners, um, you've got five minutes starting now. Please state your name for the record.
Uh, thank you. Uh, can you hear me, Chairman?
Yes, I can hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. A brand new webcam and microphone, never had one before. Um, for the record, my name is Evan Glass. I am a hydrogeologist and licensed environmental professional with Alta Environmental Corporation in Colchester, Connecticut, speaking on behalf of the intervenor, Peter, Mr. Peter Metropolis. Uh, on scope, uh, whether the scope is, you know, evolves, uh, once you've got someone on board, or whether you guide them to it uh, more expeditiously ahead of that is of, of little matter, except for ex, you know, expediting. And if they're closer to what you would like as a scope for the start, it would go faster. So I've come up with about a, a group of bullet items that I hope you all think are very logical uh, fair and, and represent the things you want to know as a commission and what the, what the, um, what the company you select should do for you. Obviously, they should review all the application materials that are there. They should review the information on the original topography and the present topography as pertinent to assessing the watershed areas of the wetlands, just as a check of the engineering work that's been done. That would be very quick to do, I think, and I, and it should be done because they need to assess whether the proposed filling will restore the original wetlands watersheds. So they'll function as they did prior to the quarry operations, which is everybody's goal here. They should interview the former owners and operators of the quarry and obtain and review any of their environmental reports they may have had before the, the new data that they're, they're coming up with now. The new data is very valuable, very pertinent. But typically on sites like this, phase one, phase two, phase three environmental investigation reports are done. It's part of due diligence. There are air photos that can be looked at to see where low areas were, where ponded areas were, so that you can find out where the fill material was used to fill those holes in the past. We have got one hole now that's planned to be filled. There were other holes that were filled. Some likely with very clean material, others likely with the DEP defined clean fill material. They should obviously conduct a site visit. They should recommend then for you a scope and a budget for any field investigations that they might consider worthwhile and warranted, but taking cognizance of the existing and ongoing investigations by the applicant. So that there's, so they avoid any unnecessary duplication. They should review the DEEP, uh, they should review the state of Connecticut statutes and the DEEP regulations to assess whether any permits are required for the project that have not yet been obtained and when any violations have likely occurred. Um, it is possible, not particularly likely, but if this is a box that always gets checked when there's a sale of an industrial property, whether the site meets the definition of a, an establishment, which is something that if it does and it was transferred, then the site would be in the Connecticut transfer, should be in the Connecticut transfer program. Just a box to be checked, uh, and sometimes establishment determinations turn up surprising results. But it's certainly something that should have been done, probably was done in connection with the 2019 transfer. So just to check on that because it's a very big fork in the road. Um, they should assess the likely depth of the seasonal high water table, what that will be after the project has been completed, after the fill has been brought in and placed. And they should recommend to you the types of materials that would be appropriate to place below the final seasonal high water table and the types of materials that are appropriate to place in the, in the dry zone, unsaturated zone above the seasonal high water table. Whether those materials be natural soil versus the various components of DEP defined clean fill. And then they should recommend anything else as the catchall. So I think those are, that's a logical group, uh, that I, I think everyone would agree with. And, uh, that's my insight to you, uh, in five minutes, I hope, or shorter for what you should get.
Four and a half. Yeah, Mr. Green, hold on. Mr. Glass, do you would please, um, email those, uh, bullet points to staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, I'm not done.
I did.
Mr. Glass, can you do that for us?
Uh, I will do that through Attorney Joel Green, if that's acceptable.
I have done that already.
That, the words we're talking about specifically, what he just discussed?
Yes.
Okay, so that-
You have them in writing.
Well then, so then, okay, we have that already, you're saying?
Yeah, I believe you do.
So then, so, um, I believe, okay, Donna, my question for Donna. Gee, when the scope of work was, was put together and sent out to the, um, this proposal, applicants for proposal applicants, do we think these points were, were included? Donna?
I'm sorry, say that again?
When, when, when staff generated the scope of work to be sent out to Arcadis and NSafe and these other, um, environmental firms, were, were the bullet points that Mr. Glass just presented to us, were all included? And the correspondence?
Hold on, I'll tell you exactly what was said. I see the email that was sent out, um, I don't know that it was I don't know whether it was specifically mentioned in the letter that went out.
Um, okay, so-
Um, Denise, did-
I don't remember the bullet points necessarily being included because I don't remember seeing the bullet points.
But who sent it out? Rick?
Rick did.
Well, my suggestion is, is that if someone would look at the, the scope of work proposal went out and just, you know, check off if, if a majority of that stuff was included. And, um, and then maybe just, as we're going to ask for clarification from probably all four applicants, uh, we get anything that was, that was missing in our literature, if they plan on also covering these other, these other points without changing much, just let's clarify how much of the stuff that Mr. Glass just suggested is covered by the proposals we got right now. Mr. Chairman, is that something that we could do?
Um.
And we could add it in with the, with, with any of the clarifications that any of the commissioners may send to you over the next couple of days, um, as well.
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to talk to Rick and see, um, if we had the actual letter that went out with that or an email or I'm not sure how those things were, were sent, were sent out. I didn't contact them myself.
Okay.
So I'll have, I'll have to, I'll have to look at that and see what was-
I'm trying to see if I can find an answer.
We don't have to have the answer tonight.
Um, I'm told that Joel's letter of recommendation was not included in what went out to the four consultants.
Okay.
Um, I guess then what we could do is, because it is, you know, valid information, we could have the bullet points from Mr. Glass, uh, emailed to the commissioners to help them, um, when they review, if they haven't already, or if they're still in the process reviewing the four applications, uh, can help them, uh, ask if they feel necessary, any of those questions in their, in their, you know, analysis.
Just one moment. I just emailed it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank, thank you. So we could do that, I think. That sounds okay for everybody else, all the other commissioners.
Gee, I don't want to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, but I do have a couple of brief comments at the appropriate time.
Uh, okay, I'll, I'll get back to you. Um, for my, for my commissioners, do we feel that that's, uh, something we want to do? No. So what, what do you, do you want to expand on that, Mr. Green?
We had two meetings in a row and they didn't even come up with any of those points when we made the motion. And now they brought it all up today. So I don't know, understand how this just suddenly shows up. You know, that's the third meeting. Now we have to go to all the way back and fix a motion?
No, no, I'm not asking, that's not what I'm, that's not what I'm suggesting. Suggesting is that-
Yeah, you asked them tonight to, about the four consultants, whether they were acceptable or not. That's what you asked them to talk about. Instead, they brought back the scope of what we already made a motion about.
So I'll, I'll clarify my position, okay? I was, if they had any con, I asked them to have comments about the application. So my commissioners, it is our decision as to who we're going to get. We don't have to listen to any outside people. They don't have to influence whatsoever. What I wanted to do is be able to make sure that, and the six of us are looking through these four applications, that we all feel that they're each, uh, sufficient or, 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 or deny one for, for insufficiency. But if, you know, you want, you want, we want to make sure we hire these people that they're going to, they're going to answer all the questions that we have. Now, if Mr. Glass's list has a question on it that you feel that you would want to know the answer to, but it's not included, it's an opportunity for you to look at that list and say, hey, I do want to know the answer to this question. You know, this, or this particular application doesn't answer the question and the other three do, so I'm going to use that as a this one out. That's, that's all I'm trying to accomplish. I'm trying to make sure that you guys have information and you have something to, to compare, to help you compare these applications. We're going to have to choose one of the four. That's all. If you feel the five of you decide, feel that that list does not help you whatsoever and won't, then, then it stops. It was just for the reasons of habit. It's for you. Hold on. I, I want to, I want to respond. I want, I want, I want to get my commissioners all, all together and understanding what we're trying to accomplish.
I have, yeah, I, somehow I ended up with this. I don't know if it's in my packet or if I printed it out. But I do have a list of the, the recommendations that the intervenor has suggested. And some of them are already in the scope of work.
That's fine.
Or, or, or thereby inference. Um, some of them could be questions that we could ask of the experts when they're making their presentation. Because by reviewing the information that they will be reviewing, they should be able to opine on many of these things. Um, so I'm not sure that we're not making a mountain out of a molehill here. And I certainly don't want to spend any more time. I, I spent 10 hours today, no exaggeration, looking at this stuff. Sitting here for three hours, listening to dueling attorneys, and I'm getting really tired of it. We've got to move this on. So, um,
Fisher Spence?
There are some good points in here, and I think that it might not be a bad idea if the commissioners look it over. And if they like any one or two that is not already in our original proposition, email that to Donna. I personally didn't see anything that was that outstanding, that couldn't be asked of the experts when they are, um, when they are presenting to us.
And just so you, just so I know, the reason why I'm, I'm bringing this up is because one of the proposal applicants had said that they, I believe, if I, if I that he needs more information on the scope of work. He was, he had, he had, he seemed to have had, uh, a, 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 a less defined proposal. And in order to compare fairly, I just want to, you know, make sure that they're the opportunity, they've given the opportunity to, to give us the best presentation they can. So that's, that's the whole point, point of this. If we feel that one of these applications or his proposals is lacking, need to have some kind of check list, or so to speak, to see where they are lacking. That's all. I'm not trying to change the scope of work. Just trying to, you know, have something that we can, we can compare, you know, and use as kind of maybe a check, you know, does this application hit all the points you talked about? Why did they skip it? Did they not understand it was there? Did they miss it? You know, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but just, um, one more, you know, and, um, Commissioner Spence spoke, Commissioner King. Uh, Paul, do you have any comments to make about how to move these four proposals forward?
I'll go. I, I read the, uh, I read the questions also, uh, that were sent by Attorney Green. And I agree with Lois on that, that they're a good reference point. Uh, I think your approach to reviewing the proposals, uh, is, is the direction we should take. Uh, no rewriting, redefining, uh, if the, uh, the companies submitting the proposals have further questions, we should give them an opportunity to ask them. Uh, but that's, at that point, we should be able to make a decision.
So your, your suggestion is that, um, we choose on the merits of the paper we have in front of us and without asking them for any clarification?
Without asking them-
Basically, the proposal is written.
As written, um, well, what, I thought we were going to take a review first.
No, we have time to review it. But what I'm saying is that without asking any of these, these, um, these- these, uh, applicants to, to, um, expand on anything. Or ask them why they may have missed this in their proposal, whereas it's included in someone else's. We could, we could, we could, we could, you know, we could say, these are our four. We're going to analyze them ourselves and go based on what we've got here and now. Any other further comment from any of the applicants besides finding out if, um, there's a conflict of interest?
I think, I, I don't think that's what I was saying. Uh, I think we should review them, but if we have questions, uh, regarding their, uh, compliance with our scope of work, we should have an opportunity to ask that through whatever the process is.
Okay. No, that's, that's good. Okay. Are you in agreement on that?
Yeah, I mean, we still, we didn't hear from two of those applicants anyway. We, we have to make sure they, they get on next meeting. And give us their information or talk to us about it so that they understand what we want.
Well, that's a good point, Commissioner Harris, that only two of them, um, were here tonight, but these proposals, I believe. Certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but they should be able to stand on their own side upon. Um, we can't obviously extend this out because applicants chose not to, um, you know, be here tonight. I think it was in their best interest and it is good for us. They can certainly be at the next meeting, but I think we should be prepared to choose somebody by the next meeting. So if we're going to get more information.
Somebody in the next meeting. I want to get this going.
Okay, so, so they won't have much, they'd, they'd have to answer any questions on the spot to our satisfaction by the next meeting. Okay. Um, I think, I think we're good. Um. Any other final comments from the commissioners?
Um, in, in respect to what BJ was saying, I think, or I actually, um, I hear what you're saying about the fact that some of the consultants were not as thorough and because they were confused as to the scope of work. And I also hear what Clark is saying about making a decision by the end of next meeting, which I think is definitely the way to go. Um, if we did send whatever questions, whatever we wanted to cover more than they have already proposed on. At, ask the two that were not here to speak on tonight, especially if their proposal amounts would change. If we added these particular questions to it, um. I, I, that was my thought. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we'll let the, um, let's, um, let's let the, let's let the applicant make their final, their final statement of the evening. Um, Attorney Finn, for your, for your team.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Steve Finn, for the applicant, uh, a couple of points. Uh, number one, uh, we believe that we, we have seen the supplemental list submitted by the intervenor. We believe, uh, a number of those items are really way beyond the purview of an inland wetlands, uh, commission in the review of an inland wetlands application. They talk about DEEP. DEEP has its own jurisdiction. And to the extent that this, uh, project, uh, does call for DEP, uh, supervision, they will, they will do that. And, and in fact, uh, uh, with me here tonight is, uh, Attorney Jane Warren, who specializes, uh, in environmental law. And she can speak briefly about the irrelevance of the Transfer Act to this project and some of the other points raised by Mr. Glass. They, these are just not things that are within the purview of an inland wetlands commission. And there are other examples. For example, this idea of going out and interviewing prior owners of a property. I, I don't think you can compel someone to do that. Uh, and, and I'm not sure why it's necessary, given all the testing that you've required and that the applicant has already performed and has additional results that it's dying to present to you to show that this property, every time it's been tested, has come back clean. But as I, as I tried to indicate, we're okay with the scope of the original motion, Mr. Chairman. And I think some of the experts or some of the, uh, that you, you, you submitted this to, they had a few questions about exactly what you meant by some of those items. They weren't looking for you to, to expand the scope beyond those items. And so you will have a dialogue with whoever you hire, you're going to have a dialogue with them. Um, and so I do want to turn this over briefly to Attorney Warren, uh, to put on the record why some of these, uh, requests by the intervenor are just totally inappropriate. And in addition, one last point, Mr. Chairman, please. I would, since the intervenor has now had an opportunity to submit something additional for your consideration regarding the scope of the expert, I think it's only fair that the applicant has an opportunity to respond to that.
Okay, Mr. Finn, um, I think that the intention, my intention was slightly derailed or o- overdone. Um, we're, we weren't asking for changes to the scope of work. Asking more of a checklist to make sure that the four different applicants covered everything that was in our scope of work, so that we can kind of compare these equally. Now, if, if none of them thought, if in all four applications, no one talked about a transfer act or suggests it. Then we're not going to ask for that if, if it's not, if it's not, you know, standard practice. So we would expect to get, um, you know, some kind of response. Well, and we would think that, well, we've never had to do that before. Or whatever the case may be. Again, really, it's, it's a way to take four, four very different proposals. And try to look at them, you know, we can pick the best one for our situation. So we're not, we're not looking at to add any more complexity to it. Just, just help and clarification.
Well, I, I, I don't, Mr. Chairman, with all respect, I, I don't quite understand that, uh, what, what, what the, what the approach is here. It's the, the independent experts are going to be, are, are, are going to do what you asked them to do. And to the extent that, and they, they may not know what, what the actual purview of an inland wetlands commission is. They may be used to working on applications before the DEEP. This is not an application before the DEEP. So I'm a little concerned about, about how this is going to work. And if it's not within your purview or the jurisdiction of the inland wetlands commission, then regardless of whether the experts think, uh, that it might be a good idea in, in general, it doesn't really have any play or any role in this pending application. Um, so that's, that's the problem. And, and I do want to go back just briefly to what Mr. Sullivan. That the first expert that, independent expert that this commission retained. If anyone would know about the scope of what's required before an inland wetlands commission, it would be him. And so he did not mention anything about these kinds of things that the interveners' experts are now saying should be included. I, I don't understand why you take Mr. Sullivan's recommendations on the one hand and then decide, you know what? We're going to ignore some of that, or we're not going to go follow what he advised. I, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, well, that's not, that's not the intention I have here.
Mr. Chairman, I can explain. I can explain.
Hold on, hold on. No, you, you're not yet. So the, the whole idea here is that we have to decide on these applications. We want to decide on it quickly. Okay, we didn't have, we didn't have two people, we didn't have. We had some questions. One person was a little, uh, you know, unsure or unsure of their scope work. Okay, and all I'm doing is trying to mine information to help my commissioners make a decision on these four applications. That's all, that's all it is. So if, if, if none of them think that they need anything else, then they're not going to, they're not going to look at anything else. They're busy enough. But if they need something to help them make a decision, I got to try to make sure and make it so that we can get an answer for you as soon as possible. I don't want to wait. I don't want to have more, more questions or uncertainty by them at the next meeting. So it's in your best interest, if you want to get this thing, is to, to let the information flow in whatever way we need it to. So that we have their disposal. That's all, it's all we're doing. I try to paint a scope of work. Trying to get some information to guide us when we're reviewing these applications. If you have anything to give us, to help us guide in the review of these applications, please, please give it to us. I don't think there's anything else to discuss about it.
Let me just respond in, in brief, Mr. Chairman. And let me first say, look, I, I do, I empathize and sympathize with your job here. I know it's not easy. I know it's, you, you're, you're, this is fairly, very new to the commission. The scope of this project is, 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 is complex. I, I understand that and I know it's not easy. And I don't really mean to make it more difficult, but on the other hand, I, I would suggest that to the extent that any of the experts that you've already reached out to have questions about what the original scope of the work was. That they should, that's them who should be invited to ask the commission, well, what did you mean by this? What, 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 we're not sure exactly what you mean by this particular, you've given me five items here to look at. We're not, I'm not exactly sure what you meant by item three. Can you please, commissioners, give me a little bit more information about that? And maybe you go back to Chris Sullivan and you get his idea. But to rely on the intervenor to do that, I don't think is right. That's, that's all I'm going to say.
Some of the, some of the questions that our commissioners may come up with in evaluating these proposals may be, need to be directed back to Chris Sullivan. You know, maybe, I, I don't know if he looks at these, if it's, if it, I, he said he doesn't comment on the applications. But certainly if we need clarification on something, um, he probably can help us. But I, I feel like we're kind of on our own now. So, you know, we don't, we may not need anything else. If, if my commissioners, um, have questions about these, these proposals, then they need to know where they can go to get the answers. Um, and with that, I think I want to make sure that I've gotten, uh, everybody needs to say anything. Um, did, I mean, I don't want to, uh, Mr. Finn, you did say you had, uh, an expert to, to mention something. If you feel, still feel it's, it's necessary for tonight, uh, if not, we'll just move along and close this.
Well, through you, Mr. Commissioner, I am going to ask Attorney Warren whether she would like to address the, the commission tonight briefly or whether you have invited us to submit something in writing, uh, and whether she'd prefer to do it that way. I, I will leave it up to her. I, I can't ask her other than through, uh, through, uh, this Zoom meeting. So Attorney Warren?
Sure. This is Jane Warren. Um, I'm an environmental attorney, 34 years experience practicing in the environmental field. Um, I just, I, I, you don't want to hear dueling attorneys anymore tonight. Neither do I, and I'm one of them. Um, I just want to say that these consultants, they're all good. They've all given you a scope of work based on, or a proposal based on your scope of work that we heard at the last meeting and that you all voted on at the last meeting. And they've all given you their best shot at how they think they can be most helpful to you. Um, to now have this list from the intervenor provided to all of these, um, LEPs will necessarily expand their scope of work to things that we've all heard that are not within the wetlands commission's jurisdiction. They're all issues for the DEEP, which has been out to the site, which has inspected the site, which has found no issues with the site, which says it's a clean operation. These are things that are in the DEP's field. Um, and so if they were to receive this list that Evan Glass came up with and Joel Green has submitted to you, um, they'll be spending the applicant's money to go read all of the DEEP regulations to see if there's any permits that might be needed for this site. Well, there aren't. There, there are no permits. Um, Evan Glass's letter already goes through how GEP wishes they had clean fill regulations and permitting authority, but they don't. Um, so these are things that are going to cost a lot of money, um, and take time, that are just completely irrelevant to you. We don't need, we don't need these LEPs to give us a review of all DEP regulations. We don't need to know whether this site is an establishment. If this site was transferred in violation of the Transfer Act, the DEP will be knocking on the door with an enforcement order. And they, they haven't, this site is not an establishment. It's completely irrelevant to this application. So, and, you know, to have a, to have an LEP go out and do phase two, phase three testing when we've already done it and, and Mr. Solis is prepared to present the, um, results to the commission at any time. Showing additional testing's been done, additional groundwater sampling's been done, it is all clean. Um, we have great news to share. So, you know, we can keep expanding this, but your, your LEPs have given you a proposal based on your scope of work to start again and ask them to now clarify and expand their proposal is, is unnecessary and burdensome and, um, time consuming. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to make another suggestion that's hopefully going to, that maybe hopefully help if it does. Um, how, I actually didn't, I, I didn't see the actual letter with the scope of work. Because I don't think, did it come to us, Donna, or did it just go out to these?
Um, Mr., actually, it was, uh, Joel's letter that went, went out to you guys that I think helped in making, determining what you were going to put as your scope. I mean, I, I'm assuming the, the motion is what went out to the commission, to the, uh, app, the third party. So what, the scope of work that you had in your motion, I believe, was included in that.
Okay, so, so the, so the letter that was received by these four firms, okay, was, was drafted by Schultz?
I think it was by, yes, by Rick Schultz, but I also think that it included the, um, the motion.
Okay. Um, I guess if, if that letter was, I guess, I'm thinking of this another way because the suggestion is not, was either not, not fully understood, or I said it the wrong way. Because what I'm hearing is, is not what I was hoping to, to, um, okay. Somehow, I'm just, my suggestion is having, having a way of looking at what we presented as a scope of work. Compare each one of these applications. So does that mean just sit and copy the letter and look at it? Or I was just, that's what I was trying to clarify. And if there's any suggestions, deal with it, um, going forward through email, because it's just up to the six of us to look at these, each six applications and make a decision. Okay. Um, and in fairness too, to the applicant, you know, if there's a way to clarify some of the scope of work and costs, rather have them, you know, know upfront, you know, instead of possibly one of these, you know, more open-ended ones. Um, you know, so that, so they have a, you know, they have, they know what they're, what they're going to expect. Um, I will just, one last time, ask Mr. Green if he wanted to comment briefly.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, like to briefly, um, uh, allow Mr. Glass to comment. And then I will just offer one minute after he's done.
Okay. Mr. Glass, you have, very quickly.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chairman Evan Glass, Alt Environmental, uh, for the, uh, intervenor. Uh, in terms of whether, whether all of these things are within the purview of the inland wetlands commission, a very critical question. I believe they are, clearly are, because they have to do with the fill, whether the fill at the site is.
Mr. Glass, Mr. Glass, do me a favor. If you feel that, please have Mr. Green, um, uh, speak with our attorney Schellenberg about any of these issues that you, that, that we've heard other expert testimony. Uh, whether they apply or not, and we'll, we'll pick it up after our counsel has determined whether or not they are within our purview. Does that sound fair?
Yes. Uh, I have a few other brief comments. Uh, my.
Just make them, make them at this point, make them. To our, to our attorney, just so that, we, we got to close this up. We can't, we can't start opening up other topics at this time of the night.
No, it's a response to, uh, what was already said by Attorney Finn and, and, and Attorney Warren.
Okay, so again, through Mr. Green, make your response. We're not gonna, I want, we're not gonna have lawyer chat or any more tonight. We're done. We're, it's done. Okay, thank you, but thank you for, 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 uh, trying to help us. Right. Um, any of my commissioners have any other things I want to say before we close this meeting? All right, someone please make a.
Chairman, just.
Close the meeting.
One thing I'd like to bring up first, please, um, on the issue of extensions. Attorney Finn and I discussed this earlier today, and originally we had said we would put it off, but I, I now think it would be a good idea just to address that, because I believe, um, the time for this public hearing ends on October 27th, unless we get the extension from the applicant, and the next meeting is the 28th. Now Attorney Finn did raise a good point in that we don't necessarily want to use all of the 65 possible days that are left for an extension to continue the public hearing. Some of it we may not need, and perhaps the commission is going to want additional time to make a decision. But I think we should get, um, you know, request some extension now, perhaps through, uh, not just the 28th, but the meeting that would come after that. How does that sound? What, what, what is the date for the meeting after the 28th?
Hold on.
November 18th.
November 18th. Um, so can we get, I, I would recommend requesting.
You're muted.
Extension for now through November 18th.
I remember this motion.
I have November 7th to November 11th.
No, that's Veterans Day.
Okay.
Wasn't it earlier in the month? I didn't think it was that late as the 18th.
No, Veterans Day.
Supposed to be the 11th, but it's Veterans Day.
Okay.
Correct.
Oh, so it's.
I, I'm happy to consent on the record. Uh, has a date been selected that you want to extend through to? I'm, I'm not sure.
It's, I, I would like to confirm the meeting na, date for November.
It's November 18th.
Okay, so if, whatever the number of days is, that's what I would recommend through November 18th for now, and we can then deal with an additional extension if necessary after that. And Attorney Finn, if you could just put that in an email, I think that would be acceptable if the commission agrees.
Sure. I'll, I'll state for the record tonight that the applicant will agree to an extension through, uh, until November 19th, 2020, and I will send an email to Attorney Schellenberg to that effect in the next day or so.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, if I may, again, Kevin Soli, Soli Engineering for the record. I just wanted to, to remind everybody that we're obviously here for an application to address a, uh, restoration. We actually had some additional information to present to the commission regarding the application, regarding the condition of the site. I think they may be interested in that. And I also wanted to talk about an update on when our additional analysis will be provided by WSP, our LEP and hydrogeologists. We had some preliminary results back. It was all very favorably. I wanted to share that with everybody, but I understand it's a late hour, and we've just had a lot of back and forth with a lot of legal jargon that may or may not have any applicability to the substance of the issue before the commission. If the commission has 10 minutes or five minutes left, I'd be happy to share that information, but I defer to you, uh, Mr. Chairman.
I, I, you know, I think we're all, you know, longing to hear this, but it is, it is a late night. I think what I'll do is I'll offer you, um, at, and the, when we open up, um, this hearing at the next meeting, that'll be your, look at the first stab or time slot.
Okay, no, that's fine. Yes, it's.
I'm okay with hearing them, though, if you want to.
You are, well, are we all okay going for, Kevin, seriously, um, how much time?
I'll keep it brief. I'll keep it very brief. Donna, would you be able to make me a presenter, and I'll be, be very, very brief?
But then we're gonna have to listen to everybody else after you talk.
No, I will give.
It's gonna go to the intervenors, it's gonna go to the attorneys, back and forth through a half an hour.
We've not had a chance to review the material either.
And we don't, it wasn't given to us. I had, like, printed copies.
And can we, then maybe, maybe I won't share any new information. I'll simply provide an update on the schedule for our consultants' hydrogeology reports and additional environmental testing. And I'd also like to add, maybe the, maybe the chairman can clarify exactly what's gonna be, what and how everything's gonna be discussed at the next meeting, because we did submit prior to the last hearing additional analytical analysis and chemical analysis of the property, in addition to revised plans. And we have yet to receive anything additional from the intervenor regarding that material. And we haven't even had a chance to discuss with the commission any of their questions regarding that additional information. So just to touch on the schedule, I'll just say that WSP, we've come, we've, uh, progressed with, I'm not gonna share a screen, I'm not gonna get into the, into the details, but they have progressed and done additional analysis. They've installed, um, two additional monitoring wells on the uphill wetlands to determine the groundwater elevation. They've installed one, two, three, four pismeters in the wetlands throughout the site, and they've tested, um, uh, and for the hydrogeology report, we've been able to conclude, or have some preliminary conclusions that are very favorable for our application. They've also done additional environmental testing. They've done nine additional test, nine tests to investigation. They've progressed five soil borings, up to refusal depths of 43 feet below grade. They've taken 23 samples of imported or stockpiled materials on the property and analyzed that material. They've taken groundwater samples from two wells on the property, and they have one surface water sample that's been collected and analyzed. All of that analysis, which has already been presented, and additional information will be provided in the next week and a half in advance and before the hearing on, on October 28th. Our professionals will be there to present in more detail, answer any questions the commission may have, um, as our LEP was at the last hearing as well. Um, you know, we're, from the very beginning, from the first presentation we've made for this project, we have been very transparent in our design, in our intent, in our analysis. And I, I, I just want to bring the commission back to that, because I think it's a very important focus of this application. We're trying to restore a site that had impacts based on ongoing activity for several, several, for, for several years. This application addresses those concerns. We've provided, and we were, have additional information which is gonna support those assertions. So I just wanted to bring it back to that, because we had a lot of discussion about a lot of other things tonight, but, uh, um, yeah.
The other thing that I need to make clear to all the applicants is that because we are meeting remotely, new information has got to come in the Wednesday, the week before the meeting, because I, I can't get it to them. I spent most of yesterday and today getting new information and sending emails and have, you know, you can't necessarily access your email while you're on a Zoom meeting. So I really need any new information prior to the meeting on a Wednesday, so that I can mail it out on a Thursday. Just heads up on that. And I don't know, because we didn't really go over application stuff, do you want me to read the, the, um, exhibits?
Read through the exhibits?
Yeah, I mean.
Does that mean reading each one of those four, uh, proposals at full?
I just am reading the exhibits. I don't read the whole exhibit.
Yeah, if anything we gotta read into the record.
Okay, so let me just do the list. Um, we left off on exhibit 26 at the last meeting, so I'm starting with exhibit 27, which was, um, the scope of work for third-party review by, um, Attorney Green, and that, that was, um, via email. So we did get that. Exhibit 28 was a request for cost estimate for a third-party review via email by Rick Schultz. Exhibit 29 was the third-party cost and scope of work quote, um, for Arcadis. Exhibit 30 was third-party scope, cost and scope of work quote via email by Weston and Sanson. 31, exhibit 31 is third-party scope by Lorario. Exhibit 32 is the third-party scope, cost and scope of work by NSAFE. Exhibit 33 was a response to Attorney Green's email regarding scope of third-party review by Attorney Finn via email. Exhibit 34 was public comment on behalf of Rivers Alliance of Connecticut by Margaret Minor, and actually that should, it should be read into the record. It's public comment. Exhibit 35 was updated in that stage of comments. And exhibit 36 was a letter regarding consultant hiring by Chris Sullivan, Southwest Conservation District.
Reminder, May have tried to chime in.
Yep. I was just gonna say, uh, thank you, Donna. I had sent an email saying it's a long night. You could summarize, or we could just do it next week, or I could summarize. I'm sure you don't want to read a, a letter at this point. It's a policy, it's a policy letter. It's, but it, I, I'm sure it can be, be accepted into record, and I could do a summary, um, the, the next time you're meeting.
That worked.
Is that acceptable for you?
Yes, that's perfectly fine, as long as that's what the commission would like.
I'm okay with it. Uh, everybody seems to be thumbs up. So everybody's thumbs up. Okay, we're gonna do that.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Is that it for the exhibits, Donna?
That's it for the exhibits, yes.
Okay, just, uh, we'll, just to, uh, talk about the next meeting. Um, we're going to, we're going to select our, to pick one of the four. That's gonna happen. Kevin, do you still have, you see you're gonna present your current findings with your, from your LEP? You wanna do that in the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and then Mr. Green.
Well, the, the next, well, the, I just, just to Donna's point. So they've received, so, um, we're expected to get draft reports next week and have them finalized before the next meeting on the 28th. I do not, I can't commit they'll be finalized by next Wednesday, which would be the full week before the hearing. I don't want to create any procedural issues or concerns with anyone if we're gonna present that information on the 28th, if it hasn't been presented to the commission a week in advance.
Donna, is the issue with, is, is you mailing us out, uh, the stuff in time?
It is.
Okay, so.
Honestly, next, next week I'm out of the office, uh, Thursday afternoon and Friday.
And is there a way to get any of these, any of this material directly from the applicant? Or does it have to run through the, I mean, can they expedite in some way? Help you out, um, to get us the stuff so we have it for the next meeting? Without putting all, any extra stress on your shoulder?
We, we could submit to Denise, and she could pass along that information to the commission through a downloadable link to access the materials.
And the interveners. You guys can work that out. You guys, we don't need to have any. Way that, you know.
Well, I'm just saying that you end up not having paper copies. I mean, you can always drop off.
I mean, you know. And they.
You're cutting out key.
I'm just saying is if there's, if there's, if there's a way, you know, if the applicant wants to try to get some paperwork in front of us, maybe they have other options that they can, that they can use to get it to us, uh, in the, in.
Yeah.
You guys.
Come and give me a call.
Guys will work that out.
Thank you, Donna.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I just want to remind, Mr. Chairman, it's Attorney Finn. I just, I just want to remind everyone that, that the intervenor's gonna, I think, gonna present first at the next hearing. We.
I was getting to that. I was getting, I was getting to that. Down the line, as I see people's faces. Uh, Mr. Green, you are now gonna be prepared to make your presentation at the next meeting?
We will present based on the state of the record as it is. If the applicant can get us the materials simultaneously with the commission, as is their duty, that would be helpful, and we'll be ready to go.
Okay, is now, um, I guess it was a question of order. Um, who goes first? Do we have some time to work that out, I believe? Uh, Barbara?
Excuse me?
Uh, is there a specific order of, of who, you know, the next meeting? Because we need to know this now, um.
No, it's, it's up to the commission how you want to proceed. I, I, I do agree the, that the intervenor definitely should present at the next meeting. We haven't, really haven't heard the intervenor's evidence yet.
Correct.
If there's some preliminary, you know, again, if, if, if there's some, um, preliminary information that the commission, you know, updated information, uh, that the commission wants to hear from the applicant first, that's fine. But yeah, as long as there's time for the intervenor to make, to make the presentation. I do agree that, that really has to, has to be done at this point.
So we'll prioritize that. That's, uh, comfortable with everybody.
And Mr. Mr. Chairman, can we plan on going first next meeting?
Um, right after we choose the, um, consultant.
Thank you.
I'll be the first to orbit this, yes. Okay. Um, looks like we covered everything. This, uh, hearing is gonna be, uh, meeting. Does anyone make a motion to close this meeting? Oh, they do. Close the. All right, I got a motion by Christian Hall.
Second.
By Christian Stewart Hall, favor.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Meeting returns 10:40 PM. Thank you all.